Turn it back over to the chairman of the committee and would be certainly happy to to answer your questions. I would also take a moment at the end to just address some of the questions that came from our communities library board in Caroline. I believe those were made available to committee members as well through the referral process. And so there was a couple kind of good points that came back from the library board that would be, I think prudent to just touch on. So you know, before I get into the agenda item as well, I'd just like to to start off by saying how important the libraries are to this community, certainly to to the county. We've supported the three libraries that that make up our community in various capacities. And it's very clear to me that these libraries are important. The community value the these services and each library within the community has built a niche in a lot of aspects. And I think as we're here today to mainly talk about Caroline, it's very true with that library in Caroline is that the niche that they've carved out to provide service that that community needs is very, very important to that community and a very important service. So with that, we do have the three service points within this community. Of course, we have Nordick Service Point that the county operates and manages in conjunction with Parkland Regional as a as a an outlet. We participate in supporting the Rocky Mountain House Public Library with the town of Rocky Mountain House, and we participate with the Village of Caroline in supporting the Caroline Service Point. As far as what we're going to have to be responsible for doing through this process as per the library's act and regulations are, we're going to have to. And again, I guess I forgot to point out, and my apologies, we're approaching this topic with the the perspective that it's going to be consistent service through the transition period. So that's why there was four options presented here. I believe there's three, and those would be either to create a intermunicipal libraries bylaw as outlined in the libraries act to include the town of Rocky Mountain House and the new municipalities, two service points, Caroline and Nordick. That's one of the options within the the libraries act. The other option would be to lobby Parkland Regional Library for a designation of another service point similar to Nordick. Administration believes that that's an unlikely possibility. The Parkland Regional Library system for quite some time now, of course, since we we set up Nordick, they have put a moratorium on taking on new outlets. And it makes sense. We live in a bit of a different world than we once did with liability and insurance and and things of that nature. So I think, you know, that that wouldn't be unadvisable, wouldn't be my recommendation to move forward. You know, why it was in Nordick was we weren't sure that that community was ready for a library yet. You know, as we know, we're growing Nordick. It started, you know, with 20 people, and we took it over, and we've slowly grown it out. And so it made sense to kind of start really basic with that library and so sort of move on. We're not there in Caroline. It's very established. It's set up, and that wouldn't be an appropriate designation, in my opinion. So the recommendation that we do have for you today as far as how to move forward with the library is that the new municipality could create a new library board through municipal bylaw as outlined in the the act, the libraries act and regulations. The new board would be responsible for the Nordick and the Caroline Library. You can't have a dual tier of library boards in one community. So we couldn't leave the Nordick service outlet being governed by Parkland Regional and just to just create our own Clearwater County Library Board for Caroline should the amalgamation move forward. That doesn't that doesn't work under the libraries act. So the new library board would have to be responsible for Nordick. I believe that's a good, that's a good thing for this community, that community. I think it's about time, in my opinion, that Nordick took that next step and we took over the governance of it. It's time. We know, we just moved Caroline into a new building. They're very well established, in my opinion, not going anywhere. And that service is important to that community, just like Caroline. So I don't see that as a barrier through this process, and I think it's it'll only be a positive. And I, you know, I think there's lots that those two libraries can share and learn from each other. And I think that having the two together would would make an awful lot of sense. So that would be our recommendation moving forward. The other the other thing that we wanted to point out to this committee relating to the libraries act is changing populations. So the new the new the new municipality is going to have a population of around, you know, certainly over 10,000 people, whereas Caroline, as an independent municipality, was under 10,000 people. And that's the cutoff for needing a librarian with a certain designation that's required within within those that industry. And so, again, I don't see that as a huge barrier or issue either. It's just something we need to plan and prepare for, whether existing staff receive that designation, or we we hire somebody else, or we access that designation and that expertise through something like a contracted service, similar as to how we sometimes procure engineering services, or we don't have a lawyer on staff, you know, but yet, you know, we have access to them in all all intensive purposes. So that that certainly could be, there's many options, and we have some flexibility as to how we we have that accreditation. We don't believe that 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 moving forward with the municipal bylaw would have any impact on service level or staffing. We certainly would recommend that that the operations as they are now in Caroline and Nordick stay consistent through the transition period. If the new board wants to make changes to improve the the service points, either one, that's certainly something a library board does on a day to day basis, and we would encourage that. But I think as we transition, it would be important to keep things consistent. You know, I think one of the questions was, you know, as far as how the board looks in the future, and if existing board members could be on the new the new board? Absolutely. And that would be up to the new municipality and the council at that time that appoints the new library board. And certainly would be, it would be my recommendation to ensure that we had some continuity on that new board, you know, to ensure that the transition in Caroline is 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 handled appropriately, but also to ensure that there's the appropriate expertise on the library board to to help take over the governance roles and that will now apply to the Nordick Service Point. I think, and so, yeah, I think I want to just reaffirm and reassure that this does not need to, and nor would it be my recommendation that affects any of the staffing or operations at either of the service points. And in fact, my recommendation would be for us to try to keep the operations at either service point as consistent as possible, and we could absolutely do that if we so wished with these recommendations. I think for now, I would I would turn it back to Mayor Rimmer, but I'd absolutely entertain any questions and try my very best to answer them for this committee.
Well, thank you, Matt, or Mr. Martenson. So I see there's one flashing light. Counselor Milhaf or Deputy Reeve Milhaf.
Thank you, Mayor. You had mentioned that there's a moratorium on Parkland taking on new outlets. Caroline's not a new outlet, right? Or am I, like, they've had a library for ever?
Absolutely, very correct. And my apologies for not being quite clear enough. Caroline is absolutely governed by an independent municipal library board appointed by the Village of Caroline. Clearwater County recommends to the village council to provide appointments to represent Clearwater County as as we do provide joint funding to that facility in conjunction with the Village of Caroline and entities that support boards. But what we would be transitioning would be the Nordick Library Board, and they are considered an outlet. And so, as I had mentioned, we can't have an outlet, in essence, if we create a board. So once we create a board, it is required that they take on governance role of both Nordick and Caroline. And that's where I suggested that if we wanted to keep Nordick as an outlet, the only option we'd have would be to lobby Parkland Regional to take on Caroline, which would not be, in my opinion, successful. But again, this is this committee's ability to do whichever you wish, and, you know, we could ask. They could say no, they could say yes. But my recommendation would would also not be to do that because I believe Nordick would benefit from the oversight of a local board that that we appoint here, and all members of the board are from this community, be it the hamlet of Caroline if amalgamation goes through, or Clearwater County as a geographical area as it sits today. Does that clarify that information? Thank you.
Reeve Swanson.
I just want to bring attention that Counselor Gibson's online. She has her hand up, so maybe she would like to say.
Oh, yes, definitely. I don't see her hand up there. But anyway, Counselor Gibson, how are you this morning? And you have a question?
I am fine. The reason why Parkland Library passed a motion last year to not take on any more outlet libraries is why we can't become an outlet library. And an outlet library is governed by Parkland. It is the board of reference that they refer to. So that is why I think it's an extremely important idea to have us and Caroline and Nordick both become part of a municipal library board, and therefore the governance is then ours, not Parkland's.
Thank you. We'll go to Counselor Northcott. Does he sit on the on our board? Do you not?
I do sit on the Caroline Library Board. I like sitting there as well. It's actually Mr. Martenson explained that all really well. You know, at the library meetings that I attend, board members and residents in there do have a high level of importance for the library. And yeah, again, Mr. Martenson did explain that very well. You know, a couple of the things that the board and residents in the area really wanted to see was maintaining the current service, the staff, all the hours, just maintain a consistent process going forward. And at the meetings, they did, the board on library did, like, they would like to see the third option with Caroline and Nordick going together.
Deputy Reeve.
Thank you, Mayor. So what happens with the Parkland system that we have now? It was my understanding from the last REC meeting that we had our ICC that involved REC, we get a three to one value with being a part of the Parkland system. So what happens with the value that we're told that we're getting out of being a part of the Parkland conglomerate? Is there another term for that? The Parkland group? Like, I'm just told it's a lot of really good value.
That's very correct. There is an awful lot of good value of being a part of the Parkland system library. And I think the best way that I was able to try to wrap my mind around this, because I think, who'd have thought that libraries were this complicated? But because they're such an important service, there's there's layers to how we've evolved over the years and to be able to provide such and a fabulous service for such great value in our community, but not only our community. As a Parkland member, you know, we have access to libraries around this community. But the best way to understand it is Parkland really is is an umbrella organization, cooperative, if you will, for lack of a better word, that looks after, primarily, their primary job is to look after what I like to call resourcing and logistics. They provide the books, they provide the mechanisms, the website to order the books, the the systems to manage the books. They also provide a ton of of advice and support to our staff and libraries, and they are they are kind of that operational side. So they handle that. The governance side, that's typically, in a lot of other communities, completely separate. Now, in Nordick, because, again, we weren't sure, is it worth setting up a board and bylaw? We worked with Parkland to designate it as a outlet so that they could also take on the governance. So those are two separate things, but they were doing it both in Nordick. All the recommendation in front of you today does is is take away Parkland's governance responsibilities around our Nordick library point. They're not governing Caroline right now, because that's the current Caroline Municipal Library. So really, all this change for Parkland's perspective does is take away their governance responsibility. And now transfers that to what would be the new Clearwater Library Board, including the hamlet of Caroline and the hamlet of Nordick Library Service Points. We would still get all of the operational resources and support from Parkland. Outside of the governance, the three to one value, I believe, would still be there. I mean, you know, the details of how grants and things are accessed and sent may change a little bit. The value is absolutely going to be there, because we get that value from being connected with Eckville and Stettler and, you know, all these larger areas. And the scale and the might behind cooperation is the value, not the governance end that they were providing. So hopefully that helps understand. And certainly, if anybody else around the table that have an awful lot of experience in libraries as well wants to add to that, I'd certainly welcome the addition of information. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Barb. She got her hand up, kind of yellow, but go ahead, Barb.
Yeah, yellow is how I feel at times. But anyway, yeah, right now, for every dollar Caroline puts in for to Parkland, we get $54 in return of investment into different categories of what we we get from Parkland. And from what the, and Jordan might be able to correct me on this, from what the chair of Parkland said, the only difference is, I think right now the service grant goes to Parkland, and then it's divvied to Caroline. And if we become a Clearwater County Library Board, then the service grant then goes from the government directly to Clearwater and does not go through Parkland. Now, I could be wrong, Jordan, but I think that's how it was worded.
Thank you. I guess we'll start with you, Senator Graham.
All right, thank you. For me, I think that the third option is the most logical one. I don't think it really makes sense to partner with the Rocky Mountain House Library when it's through Parkland, because it'll be a different different kind of thing happening, and it doesn't sound like the second option is even a possibility. So I don't think there's a point in entertaining it. So for me, and it sounds like that's what other people are wanting in the room as well, the third option seems like the best choice.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Rimmer. Having sat on, been the representative on the Parkland Regional Library Board for a number of years, I certainly recognize the value our community gets from that organization. One of the challenges, though, I have is the Nordick Library is a charter library, I believe, an outlet library, as you describe it. What are we losing by giving that up? I know Parkland Regional was very eager to see, I think, one of the last remaining outlet type libraries or a charter library disappearing. I think, I'm just wondering if we're, again, it was mentioned yesterday, throwing the baby out with the bathwater kind of thing, too. I want to make sure we're not losing something that is ultimately more beneficial to our community by not, I guess, trying to find middle ground.
Thank you, Counselor Ahid. That's, it's a great question. I asked the same one. You know, like, they're definitely, from my perspective, we're eager to to see this. Obviously, that's why they don't want to take more on. It's my understanding there's three or four outlet or charter libraries, so two or three others other than us. And I guess, again, the way the way I kind of wrapped my mind around it as we were gathering information for this, it wasn't necessarily what we're losing. It's what we're gaining, and that's liability for the, yeah, we're taking on the liability now of of the operations of that service point when it comes to, you know, a governance perspective. And I guess, reading between the lines, and maybe I'm speaking out of turn here, when it comes to to Parkland, because I'm not an expert in their operations, but it, in my opinion, it seemed like COVID really shocked them in, you know, understanding the liability they have in operating these far flung, Nordick's a long ways away from head office of Parkland, these far flung areas, and the liability they had during COVID in trying to ensure that that service point operated under provincial law. It was a very nervous time when it came to trying to make our operations comply with legislation here at the county and senior management. We put a lot of time and and blood, sweat and tears into making sure that a large organization like this complied with the ever changing legislation. So I can appreciate how senior management in Parkland, so far away from Nordick, got a bit of a eye opener when it comes to trying to take these on and ever changing things and the flexibility that you need. So from my, what I would like to think was a very thorough investigation of this matter, as asked to me by the CAO and and the Legislative Services Coordinator who are leading this up, I couldn't find anything else that we were losing or gaining. And to me, that satisfied my observation at how excited Parkland was to potentially have this being turned over to a local, my words, you know, my perspective. And we very much value the partnership with Parkland, and I believe I have a good relationship with the senior management at Parkland. So that's, to sum up your question, my answer to your question, Counselor Ahid, that's all that I could dig up as far as why. It seems reasonable, seemed to check out, and, you know, so I'll leave it at that and hope that answers the question.
Thank you. Deputy Reeve.
So we still would have access to the operational components of Parkland. So then, if we're the ones getting the grants, as Counselor Gibson explained, we then have to give them right back to Parkland for operational service fees, I would assume?
We, as the county or the new municipal entity, wouldn't be getting the grants. The board would be getting the grants. And so the county would be providing funding to the board, too, because we provide annual funding to the board. The village currently provides support to the board. They provide access and rent free access to a building. They pay the utilities, they pay the maintenance, very similar to to the other municipal partnership we have for libraries right now. So all of those things we're recommending would continue. And the grants from both municipal affairs and Parkland would be going to the municipal library board, and it would join up with funding from Clearwater County and any other funding that the very efficient folks at the current library are able to drum up. Sometimes they get funding from private sector. Sometimes they get funding from FCC, FCSS, sorry, lots of jargon. We're not mortgage and land, sorry. So FCSS and other entities of funding, that goes through the board. They have their own bank accounts. They have their own financial requirements. They are governed under the libraries act, who is responsible for that. That act is municipal affairs. So big brother to all of us looks after them. They have their own set of legislation, and they are quasi-independent from Clearwater County. In a lot of ways, like a lot of other committees, like Service Board, for example, it has a bit of independence of this council when it comes to decision making, because you've delegated them through a bylaw, and they're covered under legislation. But this body, the new council, or this body has has a little element of control over that board by way of approving funding every year. Not all their funding, as I pointed out, but some of the funding. So there is a bit of oversight from that perspective. But more importantly, you will create their bylaw, and you will you will have some flexibility in how many are making up that new that new committee, how the, you know, appointments, who can be on there, how many counselors, how many. Now, the libraries act also has a bit of framework as to how that's doing. So the council has to develop their bylaw to comply with the libraries act. But that is essentially how the funding will go. It will not come to the county. It will go to the library board. Thank you.
Lord, Mr. Martenson, and you have another follow up question? Another one?
Probably have two more. Thank you, Mayor. So then, why would it not be beneficial not to duplicate governance and go with an intermunicipal library board, as we've seen at work with many of our other services throughout the regional system of Clearwater County, the town of Rocky Mountain, and the Village of Caroline? Why would that not be beneficial rather than duplicating governance?
There would be a lot of benefits to an intermunicipal board. The recommendation before you is is what it is now, strictly because it's administration's opinion that convoluted and already very complicated process that already has very tight timelines and already has administration fairly stretched, if I may say, by bringing in another party and another partner to try to negotiate another agreement that they may say yes or no to, but will ultimately take time and resources to do, would not be what we would recommend to this committee at this time. Now, in the future, creating an intermunicipal board would be our would be our right to do, provided the other municipality agreed at any time. So if, you know, this amalgamation goes absolutely swimmingly, our community is one, life is great, and we're sitting here in excellent position in 2026, 27, any time beyond, and the new municipality's council wants to do this in conjunction with their already existing library board, that would be your duty to do, your right to do that. And I wouldn't disagree at all with with the potential that there could be some efficiencies there. There could also be some complexities. The Rocky community is not the same as Caroline and Nordick. And in my opinion, there's more similarities between Caroline and Nordick than there is between Caroline and Rocky and Nordick. They're smaller, grassroots community where, you know, the types of services that they provide are done so because there's nobody else to provide those services within the community. And so, yes, that's, hopefully, that explains why we didn't recommend that option as our recommendation today.
Reeve Swanson.
Your worship. I see on the last paragraph of that recommendation that it talks about employing at least one accredited librarian. Is it possible that with the short timeline and with the new interim council until a new established council of 2025 comes in, that we could do that on a contract basis versus an employment?
We think that's a more viable option, and a cursory discussion with, again, our partners in Parkland. our partners in Parkland, who, who I lean on as experts in this industry, as well as the Municipal Affairs folks. But in discussions with the senior manager at Parkland, it, it, it appears that these services are available, um, that we can access these services on a contract or on a con- consultatory basis for, you know, maybe, maybe a few, few days a, a, a month, you know, or, or a week, or whatever we felt we needed, or, or more importantly, the, the board felt that they needed. Again, um, how the, you know, should the recommendation move forward, how the service points are staffed and operated would ultimately be a decision of the board. Um, and so that decision would be theirs, you know, to make as far as how we, we onboard that designation to the, to the new organization. But it, it is my understanding that, that, that those contracted services are available and quicker to get than possibly, and, and possibly more cost-effective, because you can get them on a short-term basis than maybe employing somebody under a traditional employment arrangement to be an employee of the board rather than a contracted service.
Deputy Mayor Gibson, you go, you have something to, I think that you got your hand up there. Go ahead. Barb?
Yes, I do. Um, when speaking to Parkland, they said that we would only likely need a professional librarian for a few days to maybe a week a year. It's just for certain things that we were doing. And so he suggested definitely the same as, as what, um, the gentleman mayor said in your office says, is yes. Um, that's how they described it, that we basically tender out for a librarian for that, that short period of time.
Okay. Well, thank you for confirming that. It's, uh, Mr. Martinson, Director Martinson. Uh, oh, okay. Ms. Counselor Northcott?
All righty. Just, uh, yeah, Mr. Martinson did explain that again very well. Um, through all this, there's been quite a few discussions at the Carolina Library about this, but just, uh, there was no official vote or anything, but unanimous consensus with the board was in favor of creating a new library board, um, to have, you know, miss, through municipal bylaw for that third option. Just to, that's the general consensus.
Okay. Deputy Reeve?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, like, the library thing, I obviously don't know a ton about it. That's why I'm asking as many questions as I am. I honestly thought you would need a library, librarian all the time. So hearing that you only need them a few days a year makes a big difference too, because I'm like, well, Rocky has a librarian, so then wouldn't it make sense to work with the team there? But if you only need them for a few days a year, then it makes sense to do a contractual obligation potentially. I just, I don't know a ton about libraries. It's not my field of expertise. So I'm trying to, I'm learning as I go here.
Okay. Would you like to respond then, Mr. Martinson?
I would, I would maybe like to just, uh, clarify a little bit. Um, and, and again, I'm no, I'm not, I'm not as, 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 and I appreciate, um, Counselor Northcott and Counselor Gibson's help, because I haven't certainly, uh, have the, the detailed knowledge of libraries as, as maybe they would have been on the board for so long. But I'm, I'm maybe using terminology. Um, there's, there's, Caroline has a librarian. Um, they, they have co-managers of, of that facility. They do a great job. They would be considered librarians there. Rocky has a librarian. And then in legislation, they talk about an accredited librarian. And that's, that's a specific designation. Rocky does not have the population to need to have an accredited librarian. I am not an expert in the accreditations of the staff of the current Rocky Library to say whether they, they do have an accredited librarian or not, um, but they do not have to, because they're not over 10,000 people. This would, if we went to an intermunicipal board, that would certainly change requirements there for them too. And so what we're suggesting here is, we do have two librarians. They do fabulous jobs. They would probably have as much knowledge, they've been there a long time, as any accredited librarian. It, it's, it's an onerous academic accreditation, and, and of course, our, our fabulous librarians in Caroline, they have families, they got things to do. They, they've, they haven't necessarily had the time in their very busy lives to get that designation, because it is onerous, um, but they're still the librarians. Um, and I, I did want to make that, um, that, uh, point very clear. Um, you know, and, and again, in my mind, it's very much like, uh, uh, an engineer or a lawyer. We maybe don't have work for them every day, every hour of the day, and that's, that's why they're not sitting here in the office. But we do contract them so they can work for us a couple of days a week, and, and this would be in that same element. But I, I, I do see a, a scenario where we do invest in, in one of our, our staff. And I, I say "our" from a community perspective. These folks won't be working for me and, and my department. Um, they'll be working for the library board. But our community and the library board specifically might choose to invest in that accreditation, um, and eventually move from something we contract to something we do in-house. And, and, and the, the county, and the village, and every municipality make those decisions every day. At what point in time do we need to bring on a, a certified whatever designation, or is it more appropriate to contract? That, again, that'll be a decision that I believe would be best made by the board. And, um, a, 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 as a, as a roughed-in plan, uh, it's our recommendation that we contract that for now and leave it up to the potentially new municipality's, uh, appointed library board to make that decision when the time comes, if the time comes. Um, and, and I hope that helps to clarify, um, what, uh, difference between our current librarians might be and an accredited librarian and, and, and the fact that there is a difference and that there is a legislative requirement that comes at 10,000. And because the county is 10,000, no other regional partner is. Any joining with us would require that. And that's one of the ultimate reasons why we chose to be an outlet in Nordic at the time versus, you know, to bring somebody, an accredited librarian onto a library that might not actually have the legs to, to go, you know, 10 or 15 years ago when the Nordic Library was established, that, that was a reasonable decision. You know, if we, we think about the school, we thought there were going to be a school out there, and then it didn't happen. And so if we would have hired, you know, if we would have made our own board, hired an accredited librarian, or contracted that service, and then the, the library didn't actually end up being, being feasible and viable, that would have just been a lot of trouble for nothing. So ultimately, that was what the, just why the decision was made, one of the reasons why the decision was made. Um, because again, there, there's that difference with 10,000 population, and we've been over 10,000, well, since we became an M D, really, uh, um, and, and yeah, we're just over there, right? We're a couple thousand over, and, 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 and taking on the, the population of the hamlet isn't going to make us smaller, of course. So, um, yeah, hope, hopefully that's, that information is helpful to this committee. Thank you.
Yes, you've supplied a, a fair amount of information this morning, and, uh, I'm glad that you had some of the answers for these fine folk here. Counselor Laheed?
Very much, Your Worship. I would propose to, uh, make a motion to, that the amalgamation committee recommends, uh, that a newly estal-, the newly established municipality creates a new library board as, uh, permis-, as permitted through municipal bylaw and the Libraries Act and regulations.
On the floor, should we take a vote? All in favor? It's carried. Uh, Barb? Oh, she put her hand up. There was a slight delay. She's way down and sundry. All right. Well, thank you. We're much for, yes, appreciate it.
Also, I believe Counselor Wald is, Counselor Wald also on the, on the line? Okay.
Thanks for confirming that.
And, um, questions from the Caroline Library Board? Um, Matt?
Yes, please review them. Yeah, if, uh, if that pleases the, the chairman of the committee. I could go through them right now. I have them in front of me. Thank you. Um, the first question we received from the library board was, how will our library be able to sustain the same level of service we are able to offer currently? How is operating, staffing and funding? Um, it would be our recommendation that service level maintains, and, um, that could be a strategy and a, uh, a vision and philosophy of the council when they're appointing the new, um, uh, municipal board. The way you structure your bylaw, um, is to make sure, uh, that through those processes, we maintain the, the consistent service level. And I believe that, that I see no barriers to doing that, um, uh, through my investigations. So I hope that helps to, uh, not only answer that question for the library board, but also reassure the entire community. Uh, and I'll point out, uh, a, a significant county population, uh, that uses that library, uh, potentially more than, than village, uh, by the numbers. So, uh, when I say community, I mean both the village and, and Clearwater County, that we, we will, uh, be motivated to continue that service level. Uh, the next question is, is there a way, uh, to influence or petition the Parkland Library Board to allow another outlet library? Um, my opinion is, is nope. But again, I, I did mention to this board, we could, um, ask them, uh, it's moot at this point, because this committee did vote for the option that didn't include that, and, and I believe that was wise decision, because I don't believe that, um, that we could achieve that. Um, and, um, I, I do believe, I have talked to the, the, uh, one co-manager of the library. That wasn't the board's first option, but it was certainly something that they thought of, um, should, um, you know, um, should we have, have issue with, you know, some of the requirements of a, of a new library board. So I believe that was why the question was asked. Um, how do we answer patrons who are concerned with how the library will be affected and who want to bring their own questions forward? I have talked, again, with the, the library managers, and my recommendation to, uh, to her was to, um, assure that, in my opinion, um, that this committee was, uh, uh, wishing to, um, see service levels maintained. I'm very glad that the community, uh, didn't, um, didn't contradict my, uh, opinion when it comes to talking to the managers, though I did point out, I've been doing this for 21 years, so, um, my, uh, my spidey senses are often there. Um, and so I think, you know, I also encourage them to watch today. So, uh, I hope, uh, that they were encouraged by, uh, this committee's, um, decision today and, and, um, uh, uh, general, uh, um, consensus that that is an important service to our community, and we want to make sure that it continues. So thank you for, uh, uh, reassuring that for, for our community and those of us that, that, um, believe that libraries are also important to our community. Can this, can the current sitting library board members transition to the new library board if it's formed? I did touch on that a little bit, and, and, uh, the answer to that question is absolutely, but that is a decision of the new municipality's council, how that looks. Uh, and it's your decision when you appoint to committees of all nature. Um, as we know, both councils independently have done so since the, since the dawn of time, if you will, and both committee, uh, both, uh, uh, the new, the new council will have to continue appointing to committees, both this one and a multiple others. So, um, you can appoint those, uh, members, uh, if you wish, and we would recommend that you appoint at least some, if not most or all, members of the existing, uh, library board, because they know the best, uh, way to govern that board into a seamless and flawless transitional period. So that would be my recommendation, and, and I, I expect, uh, that it's possible that I will be providing a recommendation in the future to a new council as to how to structure your bylaw and, uh, a new committee. So I, I, I do potentially look forward to doing that if, if I do have the, the privilege and opportunity to do so. Uh, the next question is, if library staff is currently schooling to become a professional librarian, is there consideration for this with Municipal Affairs regarding the Libraries Act and municipalities over 10,000? Uh, it's not my understanding. I did review the legislation. I, we didn't formally ask Municipal Affairs. Again, um, Miss Haight has, has pointed out that council in a, in a lot of ways can ask the minister whatever they wish. Um, it's up to the minister to oblige or not, of course. But, um, I don't believe that we need to worry about this. I believe if, I, 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 I would, I would, as I mentioned, it would be great if, if a, a staff of, of the library board wished to, to move into that designation, and I hope a new library board would, would encourage that and provide the resources, though staffing of the libraries is up to the board, not me or council, as I pointed out. Um, but I, I point, I, 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 I suggest how we could handle that transitionary period. We would have to have an accredited, uh, uh, person appointed, um, um, within the first year of forming that new library board, um, in my understanding of how, how the legislation works. And, and I would recommend that we do that much quicker, um, you know, at, likely at the first meeting, uh, that the library holds. Um, and then that, that contracted service could be in place until staff achieve the designation. And that's the great thing about contracted services. You know, they understand they're here for, uh, a good time, maybe not a long time. And so once their services are no longer needed, because we now have that equation in-house, it's very easy and, 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 and clean and, and seamless at, um, at, you know, you know, not continuing a contract or building into a contract that we will use your services for a fixed period or until we have those services in-house. The next question is, assuming that the county completely takes over all assets, including the library building, contents and bank accounts, is the county, um, willing to assume building, maintenance, utilities, and let the library remain free, uh, rent-free, or make up for that in budgeting? Um, you know, I, I did, I did chat a little bit about this with the, the folks at the library. Um, as I pointed out earlier, the Village of Caroline, uh, through the support that they provide the library board, they provide rent-free access to a building, they pay the utilities, and they look after the maintenance. Clearwater County already does that as well for the Nordic Service Point. Um, I cannot, uh, uh, speak for the, uh, new council as to what they wish to, uh, provide, uh, for support to the new, uh, library board. But again, I, I cannot see why the new council, who are already doing these things today, would not continue to do those things. And it would be my recommendation that we did do those things if, uh, the point in time came for me to be able to make that recommendation. So, um, it is the new council's, uh, responsibility to, to support the, the new library board, and, and I just can't see why they wouldn't continue to provide that same supports that we have during the transition period. So that does, uh, cover off the questions that we received from the library board, and, and I just would like to thank the library board for providing those great questions. They certainly helped me better understand and, and guide my investigation on behalf of this committee to try to bring the best information available, um, to this committee to make this decision. So thank you to the, the library board and their staff. Um, great staff, I might add. Thank you.
Very much. Mr. Martinson, uh, you did a stellar job of going through all of the details and answering all the questions, and I, well, we're going to, we've already voted on it. I hope that answered all the questions that people had and concerns and fears about our, our libraries. So, thank you again very much. We don't want to take a break yet, do we? What, what time do you have to? Well, we take a break then. We'll take a break at, uh, 10:15. Thanks again. Let's move along then to, uh, bylaws and resolutions of existing municipalities. Sorry, my neck's stiff on that one side. I can't turn.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, committee. This next item is regarding, uh, bylaws and resolutions of existing municipalities. The staff recommendation is that, um, the committee agrees to recommend that no special arrangements regarding existing bylaws and resolutions of Clearwater County and the Village of Carolina required. This item covers, uh, the next items regarding fire services bylaw. Um, this item covers the existing bylaws that the Village of Caroline has regarding the Caroline Library Board. By default, every bylaw that the By default, every bylaw that the existing municipalities have automatically, um, transferred to the new municipality, um, they will continue to be in effect until the new council reviews, amends, repeals, or replaces with new bylaws. So this is sort of like a blanket, uh, blanket recommendation. And when it refers to a different arrangement, Clearwater County Administration reviewed the inventory of bylaws that, that the county has. And there was some, a recent housekeeping of bylaws approximately two or three years ago. So an extensive review was conducted then. And with over approximately 1,100 bylaws that, um, are in the county's bylaw directory, there was no bylaws identified as needing special arrangements. And in discussions with municipal affairs, there wasn't anything that was, uh, brought to attention in the discussion. And so it's recommended that, um, that the committee agrees that, uh, that no special arrangements are required as by default, all existing bylaws and resolutions are carried forward.
Yes, um, thank you, Tracy. Deputy Reeve.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, you mentioned 1,100 bylaws from the county and that we don't have any special bylaws that would need to be looked at, but this is a marriage. What are the bylaws that the village has? Are, do they have any bylaws that would have to be looked at especially? How many do they have? How, how would that affect our hamlets that we already have in existence? As their bylaws would be different than the current ones in place for Clearwater County?
I understand that Village of Caroline Administration has also done, uh, inventory of their bylaws. And, um, I don't believe Larry has joined us today. Oh, yes. So I'll refer to CIO Wright to, to answer those questions.
Good morning. Can everybody hear me okay?
Very well, yes, thank you.
Yeah, we went through a complete review of our bylaws. We've categorized them, built, uh, spreadsheets and all our agreements and that. We went through and rescinded numerous bylaws that are aged and dated at this point in time over the past, uh, nine months. And we have, uh, two or three more. And we're more than happy to supply our database and our spreadsheets, uh, with past, uh, bylaws we rescinded and current bylaws and that, uh, as part of the process with the CIO's office in Clearwater County. And we advised them of that, uh, a number of months ago.
All right, thank you. Uh, Counselor Lawheed.
Uh, thank you. And I, I do have great confidence in our administration to look through those bylaws. I find it very, um, amazing that we would have well over 1,100 bylaws and there would be no conflicts between two different municipalities' approach to the bylaws and the things they govern on. I, I guess my question is, I guess, just to assure that we don't see any difficulties with the bylaws that are in existence right now. And/or are there any protections that there isn't a flurry of bylaws that happen between the recommendation going to the minister? And, uh, that new, um, municipality that's formed on, uh, January the, January the first? Just, uh, just kind of trying to avoid, uh, a discussion when it's more critical.
Thank you. Go to, uh, Larry to ensure that you have something to add to that. Mr. Wright?
Um, yeah, thank you. Um, one of the areas that we're working on is our land use bylaw. We've just finished, uh, upgraded zoning, uh, conflict within the community there and that's been in place. And, uh, our land use bylaw is based on, uh, 2009. And, uh, it requires basic updates, but to redo it all would take over a year. It'll cost about $22,000 to $25,000. And, uh, so we're doing the basic upgrades that we need to do at this point in time and bringing them to council one by one as required and that. Um, that's basically one of the key ones that you would, uh, need to be aware of, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I, I saw the light finally.
Thank you. Business will continue for, for both municipalities. And yes, there will be bylaws passed from, from this time and going forward up to January 1st, 2025, as required by, by business. So Clearwater County is currently reviewing the existing land use bylaw. There will be bylaws coming forward for the, um, tax rate, uh, borrowing bylaw, uh, like, bylaws will need to be passed by each existing municipality. Now, bylaws, as a rule, are, um, certain bylaws are legislated. So they do have to come forward. There can't be, um, a stoppage on passing bylaws. So does that help? Does that explain?
Yes, I think part of my question was to, to hopefully get that thought out in the community as well. Uh, I know Clearwater County is undergoing a major revamp of land use bylaws relating to the municipal development plan, uh, and aligning those, those things, uh, which could bring a flurry of, of bylaws, uh, being brought in at some point in time. It may be before the, the amalgamation, uh, date or the new municipalities formed, or it may be after. We never know how long it takes when you involve the public and, and feedback. But just having the idea that it's not something that's trying to be snuck around the public, uh, that this is a process that's ongoing and there is a provision and recognizing that this is something that's part of normal, normal business.
I'd just like to respond before I go, because you got a lot of questions in today already and I haven't even had one. I know. I would just like to state on, on those particular points that, uh, Counselor Lawheed had made is that I think it would be, uh, prudent on, on both of our administrations that, uh, if we are planning on any new bylaws, other than the ones we're trying to just clean up, that we're aware, uh, so that there isn't, there isn't something that's going to be snuck in. Um, because we are going through this process, we need to be upfront with each other. Don't be sneaking in. I saw that over there. I saw you guys looking at it. What? But I think it, it would be somewhat prudent on, uh, from us and, and from the Clearwater County and to, um, you know, make sure that we're not, that we're being forthright and, and, um, allow, you know, the, the communication between us to, to continue so that, you know, we're not going to cause some friction or cause some problems going forward. And with that, I will now hand it back over to Deputy Reeve, um, with her 27th question already. I've been writing them down.
Thank you, your count. Oh, excellent. Thank you, Mayor. I, I have several concerns about us just can, trying to amalgamate existing bylaws. Um, as, as was stated, we are redoing our land use bylaw. We're in that process now. Um, now, um, I actually didn't realize you guys were in the process of redoing your land use bylaw, so that, that is good to know. But for example, we don't have some of the districts within our land use bylaw that you have. Um, and if we do have them, because we do have Hamlet Residential, et cetera, in our land use bylaw, they will probably not line up with your Hamlet Residential. Um, and I don't think that we want to set up a multi-tier land use bylaw system and I don't want us to spend the, the hundreds of thousands of dollars that it costs to redo a land use bylaw, um, to just have to redo it again in a year and a half. So I don't know if there's any way for us to be cohesive on that right in the beginning. Like we have a Nordig section in our land use bylaw. I would assume that we will continue having a Nordig section in our land use bylaw. Again, the, all the public feedback has to be done and stuff still. Can we have a Caroline section in, in, for Caroline Hamlet, um, land use bylaw? I'm hopeful that those things can take place. But I'm sure you guys also have other, um, peace officer-based bylaws that are going to be different than ours, um, that now our peace officers will have to enforce. Because once it's a new, we'll get, we'll get, oh, that's, that's different? We're getting to that? They're in a bylaw. So if we're now, if we haven't even discussed what these bylaws are and yet we're going to say they're all going to come over, the existing bylaws are moving over and then later we're discussing the bylaws? Seems like we're putting the cart before the horse with this particular motion.
Um, thank you for that. Uh, go ahead, Mr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mayor Emmer. Um, and if I may, I, I wouldn't mind winding it back to Counselor Lawheed's previous question because I, I, I think that was quite important about the 1,100 bylaws and, and none would conflict. I think the important answer there is Ms. Haight's previous statement that these bylaws would transition over and continue to be enforced. So there would be a, a period of time where the land use bylaws, for example, to Caroline would pertain to Caroline as per Clearwater County's land use bylaw. But then a new council would marry the two and create, um, because those bylaws would enforce. And there would be, I would envision, my recommendation, there would be, um, no different than the bylaws pertaining to Nordig, pertaining to Nordig and not Lessaville. It would make sense to me that the same philosophy would flow through. Mr. Wright and I have had conversations on their, their, uh, bylaws and Clearwater counties. Um, but I think, to put this committee's mind at ease, um, the simple explanation is there really isn't a lot of conflict even with, uh, Caroline's and Clearwater's because we've worked together for so many decades. Um, it was Clearwater County's Planning Department that actually created the area structure plan for the industrial park to the east side. It was for many years, Clearwater County's Planning Department that did development permits. Um, it was for many years, we actually had a shared CIO, um, in those seats for Caroline that had cohesive, uh, processes and, and development permits and from a land use planning. So I, I think the fact that these community, two communities, uh, today, individual communities, have worked so cohesively for so many years, um, is their unsightly present bylaw, unsightly presence bylaw, a little bit different than ours? Absolutely. If an amalgamation came through, theirs would be enforced, not, ours would be enforced until a new council married them cohesively. If that was the choice, it might be identified separately even then. Um, does that help, uh, a, address?
And I think, you know, I have the utmost confidence that we've had a good track record of working together to find solutions. And the complexities are, are there, but it does take work to do that. I just want to know there is an awareness that it's not always, uh, the next, doing the next good thing is not without effort.
Ms. Haight. And I too would like to just note and assure the committee that there is no subterfuge, no, um, uh, you know, sneakiness. Um, because, uh, that is why by default, all of the bylaws from each municipalities continue to be in effect. And that's, the purpose for that is to ensure a seamless, as, uh, seamless transition as possible. It's just, um, I guess a matter of timing. There's, there's just, it's impossible to review all of the, uh, bylaws from each existing municipality before the amalgamation goes through. So to ensure that everything stays in place as per legislated, there's a lot of bylaws that municipalities need as per legislation. So to ensure that there's still compliance with legislation, by default, they still remain in effect until the new council can review and then decide as to amendments, revisions, or repealing. So if, if that helps to just assure the committee that, um, that this is just really a sort of an administrative, um, process and that, uh, it's to aid in the transition.
Thank you. Number 28.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, you're saying the new council will marry the two land use bylaws as an example. So why are we redoing them right now? That it seems like perhaps that might be a waste of time, money, efforts. And you're saying administration is very tapped with time anyway. Maybe that is something that could be taken off plates. And I've been pushing hard for this land use bylaw to get done and completed and updated. It's ancient. Um, but is it all for nothing?
Thank you, Mayor Emmer. Um, respectfully, Deputy Reeve Melhoff, I'd suggest not. Um, simply because our communities, um, are, is vast. Uh, Nordig is a far different community than Caroline. Caroline's a far different community than Lessaville. And that's the importance of a land use bylaw. Um, going through Clearwater County's process of a land use bylaw, I don't see how it would conflict or interrupt with this process in dealing with an amalgamation with Caroline. Um, C-CANS, for example, uh, the RV, uh, conversation that we're, we're engaged with, with the citizens of Clearwater County today. Um, those amendments, um, the amount of sleeps, uh, that are restricted in Nordig, those, those conversations, um, should and, and need to happen, I would say regardless. And, and please don't take that as a disrespectful statement. But I, I don't see the conflict from one to the other. I, I truly do believe, um, that our process should and needs to happen anyway. And with a current land use bylaw going through this process and Caroline going through a, a cleanup of theirs, I would only see as preliminary work needed to better marry the two down the road anyway.
So, okay, thank you very much, Mr. Emmons. Um, we have to take a, a break here, uh, at 10:15. Do we want to go ahead and make a motion? Oh, sorry. Uh, well, let me finish the question. Do we want to make a motion and then vote on it? Or do we want to wait until after the break? It's up to you guys. Okay, uh, Counselor, Sir Mack.
I'm going to open a whole can of new worms.
We'll be taking a break. Well, is the can smelly?
Probably.
Well, let's open it afterwards.
I had a few coffees around Caroline and in the county. And everything that I talked to about the amalgamation, the first thing that comes up is a solar panels in Caroline.
Thank you. I said we'll open that can, can of, that can after our break because, uh, the Reeve has to, uh, step out briefly. Now you open the can and now it's going to be smelly.
Hang on, ring a bell.
You just had to do it, didn't you? Okay, let's, um, we'll take a 15-minute break. Well, that, that should give you enough time, should it not, uh, Reeve? Because I think you want to come back for the smelly can that was opened. Because I think you want to come back for the smelly can that was opened.
Thank you and welcome back. After the commercial break here, we have, we have, we left it with Counselor Sirmak has, wants to respond to an item, so carry on.
I, I would just like a response to what is happening out in Caroline to do with the solar panel because that question comes up all the time. I talk to almost anybody in the county or in the village. They would like to know how it's going, where it's going, how it's going to affect them, what's going to take place or what is taking place. If you can enlighten us, that would be great. If you're not allowed to, tell us that you're not allowed to.
Uh, no, I can, I can certainly supply some information on, on the process and basically we're waiting on the provincial government to, um, they had a moratorium on it for six months or seven months. So now we're waiting and I think they've delayed it till April 15th. I think the decision of the AUC concerning that. Uh, so there isn't really much more to report other than, you know, there's uh, those are four and those against and for all numerous reasons. So that's where it's sitting at this particular point in time and no, you can't talk. Did that answer your question?
Um, y- yes and no. I, I just kind of really like to know, are they bringing back some recommendations then on what is going to happen at April? Or is it just that the moratorium's going to come off?
Well, the moratorium comes off at the end of, uh, March, I believe, uh, something like that. Is it the end of February? Well, I wouldn't be surprised if they moved it another month, but the AUC, AUC went and pushed it back, um, to April 15th. And what the AUC will do is they will listen to all the different participants, um, and take that into consideration whether it's approved or not approved. And that's where it sits at this particular point in time.
Oh, okay. I, I just thought seeing it was amalgamation meeting and that's one of the key topics that everybody's talking about. I thought it should be out in the open and let everybody know what is actually happening instead of all this here, say around town and around the county.
Uh, yes, lots of it and, uh, um, all I, all I can say is that, you know, that, that we looked at providing a chance for, um, you know, extra taxation or tax revenue because we're very limited on it. Uh, this process, I did not approach pace as some of the, the questions were asked. Well, or actually I was accused of approaching pace. This, this went way back, uh, five years when, uh, the gentleman that's heading it up now was, uh, with another company at that time. And so some of the discussion was going on about that and then there was nothing for the longest time. And then, uh, he approached me and I said, well, we can, we can certainly bring that to council. We went forward with it and, you know, we allowed the process to go through and that's where it's sitting. Now, I know there's varying degrees of, uh, understanding about solar and there's all information on this side and information on that side. But the main thing was, you know, for us as a, we're not putting any money into it. It's a private company on private land and, um, you know, they certainly get, uh, the, the owners get a decent amount of, of rent and, you know, the, the landowners crippled. They've lost their son-in-law, uh, recently. Um, so, you know, it's, and the chance for us to have more revenue to be able to fix, you know, uh, fix holes and so on and so forth. Does it benefit us greatly? Probably not. And really frankly, you know, solar is, you know, is it the most reliable? No, but it is another source of power and that's what people seem to forget. And as we, this province keeps on growing, uh, population wise and the amount of power that's required, especially if we bring in all these electric vehicles, boy, we seek, they'll be coming to Caroline to plug in.
You need to take a recess.
Okay, um, so did I maybe answer that a little fuller?
Yeah, I just wanted to get it out there amongst the people that is watching so that they have an understanding.
It's not some devious plan, you know, um, and then, you know, there's a, we hear all the time about, you know, it's taking up good farmland. You know, and I've said this before is that if you can go, uh, if you can show me any county and I'll pick on Red Deer, I won't pick on you guys this time, but they're, they are taking number one soil out to build estate acreages. Now, if land is so damn important and it should be, there's no way that number one soil, farmland should be made for estates. So my argument is, you know, this will still be agriculture and, you know, we got, we'll have a bunch of sheep and goats running through there. Somebody suggested to me that they should supply some certain types of stuff at the store for the sheep. But, okay, so it, it is, I hope that answered your question. And I got a whole slew of other ones. And I think you were first, uh, number twenty-nine.
No, it's twenty-nine.
Oh, I earned another one. Okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, I'm going to do my best not to get into the whole debate with, with solar because that, we could be here all, all day if that's really what we do. Um, I want to look at the bylaws in, because I get questions about this all the time. So about particularly the solar installation. If, and I've read through your land use bylaws, et cetera, and it doesn't look like there's actually enabling legislation in order to have this. So how are you changing your, your bylaws that could then negatively affect us when we bring on your bylaws when they're both in conjunction at the same time? Because you will have built enabling legislation on renewables. We also do not have, um, bylaws yet that discuss renewable energy in any form. Um, I just want to make sure that that doesn't become, um, a concern for Clearwater County and, and thank you for not using Clearwater County as your example for class one soil because we don't have any.
I know that. It's class seven. Four, three and four. Um, I would prefer if, uh, our CAO would, would address that. Larry, are you available?
As always, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can hear you very well. So Mr. Roy, can you go ahead and just address, um, the Deputy Reeves' question?
Yeah, uh, I think the part of answer to the future is the IDP work that's been done in the past between the county and, uh, the village and that which allows for growth in different areas that our MDP from 2019, uh, allows for the, basically the same thing. The only thing that's out of step is in a number of areas in our 2009 land use bylaw. We don't have anything for alternative energy. Uh, we do have, uh, public utilities identified in that, which is one avenue that, uh, PCPS, we've had discussions with them on how do we handle our future? And they've been very helpful and we've had them come and address council in December. Uh, but the basis is the IDP and the MDP and the work that's already been done, uh, prior to this point in time and before, uh, COVID hits. So I think that's part and parcel solution. That's where we're going to have to look for the points, uh, where we'd agree on, uh, different projects and different levels and, uh, development and economic growth.
Did that answer your question?
No.
Would you like a supplemental?
Yes, please, Mayor. Um, uh, CEO Wright, but so are, how are you changing your land use bylaw or MDP to, um, accommodate the renewable energy? Are you creating it as a, as a discretionary use on, I believe this is currently zone rec, um, uh, this particular one, um, zone residential, um, or are you doing that on ag like, like, and how will that potentially impact Clearwater County through this process as we bridge and bring together our bylaws? Because I'm trying to bring us back to how this could affect an amalgamation. And that's how I see how it could. If, if we bridge and you've made it as a discretionary use on residential property, does that then make it a discretionary use on any residential zone property within the newly formed municipality? Because I would very much not want to see that happen.
Yeah, or Larry, do you want to address that? Uh, I know that, uh, Ms. Haight has, was going to hit the button here.
Well, let her, let Tracy go ahead. Uh, like to me the IDP and the MDPs already lay the groundwork, but there isn't what I'm aware of, uh, a posture, position on alternative energy in either one of our processes. But Tracy, maybe you can fill me in if I'm missing something or two, please.
Could I, could I just add that, um, I don't believe that that parcel on the north end is residential. Like it, part of it is, but I've, I've said, stated over and over again, that there is a sour gas pipeline to the north, not the big pipeline that goes to the, on the west side, that we have a 1.5 kilometer, um, offset that we can't build residential there. So I believe that particular parcel of land is discretionary use or something to that, that, uh, but you can correct me, uh, Mr. Wright, if you, if you, I know you, you know what that is. And let's go ahead and address that then, and then we'll come back to, uh, to Tracy. I mean, Ms. Haight.
Yeah, um, within our MDP that was done in 2019, it is, uh, open for development. And, uh, one of the interesting things in, uh, our land use bylaw and our MDP is we don't have any urban reserve or alternate reserve, uh, to have, uh, it identified as either industrial, light industrial, uh, urban reserve, multifamily, uh, and light industrial would cover that under, uh, alternative energy. But this is where our bylaws are lacking. But the MDP and IDP, uh, show up quite strongly in the statute documents. So, but I would like to hear Tracy's comment on, uh, the alternative energy side under the land use bylaws for the county.
Right, thank you. And Ms. Haight.
Administration is bringing forward, uh, bylaw regarding renewable energy to, to county council. I, I would just like to note a possible scenario and also point out that the new municipality will be a rural municipality and it is, uh, amalgamating with an urban municipality. And after that, that urban municipality becomes a hamlet within the rural municipality. So the scenario would be that, um, Clearwater County currently has a land use bylaw and providing that the review is completed before January of 2025, that existing county land use bylaw will be in effect. After amalgamation, Caroline becoming a hamlet will fall under that land use bylaw. And similar to, um, like Deputy Reed Mal have mentioned earlier, in that land use bylaw, there is a section for Nordic, Nordic and all, all of the hamlets. So Caroline would then also be added into, um, that land use bylaw by way of an amending bylaw. So because all existing bylaws remain in effect, once amalgamation takes place during the transition period, a lot of these questions will be addressed when it comes time to, um, amend the current land use bylaw to include the hamlet of Caroline. At that time, if there, um, is any, uh, questions or cause for concern regarding the hamlet of Caroline, that's when those questions and concerns will be addressed. And I'll ask, um, I'll ask CAO Emmons to jump in and, and, uh, perhaps maybe add to that scenario as to what happens after amalgamation with the land use bylaw.
Personally, I think you've covered it very well, uh, Ms. Haight. Um, I was trying to challenge myself and my own memory when I was a large part of the team that was going through the IDP and the MDP for the Village of Caroline. And I recall well the piece of property and the pipelines basically stagnated development on that property. And if that was the catalyst behind the sentence of preserving ag land for an urban municipality or not, um, I just, I can't remember well enough. But I do believe as far as process, uh, Ms. Haight covered it well. Um, Clearwater County administration has been working on a renewable, um, portion for, to address our issues, um, always trying to beat, um, before the need arose. So our intent is to have something in place, um, that, that should provide a bit of a guiding light. Um, saying that, land use planning legislation, this one's an active application. It would fall under Caroline's current rules, not ours. Um, you know, that addresses future applications, but this one truly would be within Caroline's MDP and their land use bylaw.
Thank you. That, whose question was it so long ago?
You can make an assumption. You can just guess it.
It was you.
Probably me.
One that always asks most of the questions. Okay. Did that address some of that?
And then come back.
Well, I'm going to go to Counselor Nelson. Go ahead.
Okay, on the solar farm issue, I have openly opposed the solar farm in council. I have also opposed the amended bylaw use. I opposed it in its first reading, it has to go to the public, I understand. I am also an intervenor with the solar farm. I have recommended or asked that if it needs to be in our community, would it not be more suitable to be in the industrial subdivision? So that's where I'm at on this.
Okay.
And I asked a surveyor friend where the gas pipelines were, and he said there's no sour gas pipeline in that 78 acres. It is, it is residential.
Excuse me, Counselor Nelson, there is, there is an offset, and I don't want to get into this because you've made your point where you're at. I've made, you know, we've addressed the question, we don't need you to throw, put your flag up and tell us what it, it is what it is. And we're discussing, you know, the, how the bylaw, our bylaws will will apply in land use. So, I mean, this is only one example, it doesn't have to be, you know, anything that, anything more than than that. There's going to be more push, I'm sure, for solar or wind in the county, and there might be places for it. But at that particular time, Caroline does not have vast, you know, areas of land, and we need a tax revenue, so, and we're dealing with the, and whether it's approved or not, it's up in the air, okay? So, thank you for that. We'll go to Counselor Lawheed.
Well, thank you, Your Worship. I hope to draw us back into the agenda item, which essentially, as I read it, is a staff recommendation for a committee recommendation to a recommendation to council who will recommend to the minister. So I see this staff recommendation that basically talks about bylaws and resolutions. We haven't talked about resolutions, because I think it allows the business of both the village and the county to continue forward, and at some point in time, we come back and review those combined directions with the newly formed municipality and see if it still fits within that. And I think that discussion, whether it's maybe the things that have been discussed here in this last few minutes, or it's other things that occur over the next eight or nine or 10 months, I think there will be a time to discuss that. So I would be more than pleased to make a motion that the amalgamation committee recommends that no special arrangements, arrangements regarding existing bylaws and resolutions of Clearwater County and the Village of Caroline are required. As per staff recommendation.
Yes, thank you very much. And any question, questions for the, about the motion? Number 30.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. So with this particular motion, it makes it so that we can just continue status quo. But would it not be prudent to go with the mayor's suggestion to also then include either the village or the county as, similar to what we do with Municipal Planning Commission, where we send referrals? Could they not then get a referral for any bylaw or resolution changes? We can have the same, so that we're knowing it right off, right off the bat, similar to what we do with development permits with Municipal Planning Commission or subdivision? We, they are referral agencies. Could we do the same for any bylaw changes? And/or work together to build this renewable bylaw? Because why are we both building a renewable land use bylaw when we'll both be working together anyway? We might as well build it together, and we can both use it.
Yes, Mr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mayor Emmer. If I may, development in the Village of Caroline, Clearwater County would be a referral regardless, based on the current planning documents. Recipically, it isn't reciprocal, unless it falls within the I D P area. Then Clearwater County would refer to the Village of Caroline, hence that document. If, if it's this committee's wish, that if there is an amendment to Nordic and Caroline be referred, that could be another conversation. But there are processes in place today that require that referral, but it is limited to that I D P, M D P area, if that helps. As C A O Wright pointed out, we will definitely share back and forth at administrative level if that also helps a piece.
Did that address, or do you have a supplemental?
Thirty-one.
Thirty, well, we'll call it 30.1.
Thirty-one, okay. Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you, C A O Emmons, I appreciate that. As we go through this process, if we come up against a barrier talking about some things that affect bylaws, et cetera, i.e. we're about to talk about emergency services and the bylaws associated with it, does this override any decision that would be made on that? Because we're just going to keep the bylaws the same according to this. But what if there's changes that would like to be made as we discuss other areas, i.e. emergency services is the next topic? Can we come back and, you know, change our mind on this? Whose procedures are we following? Can we come back and change our mind?
We have a question from Mr. Wright. So you'll be able to formulate your response as well, Mr. Emmons. Go ahead, Mr. Wright.
Yeah, yeah, we're, I was holding back a little bit, good point about the fire and emergency services. When we did minor upgrades to our M D P and our land use bylaw that would affect fire and emergency services in the county operations and that, we do refer to them, and we've been working very congruently with your fire and emergency services and fire marshals and that, also deal with safety codes issues. So it's all relevant together, and I think everything works in place so far. And that would be just my key point, it's already in place and already working. And if you see a special cause, whether it be an environmental build, a cannabis facility, we do that in tandem with many, many agencies. So it's already there, folks, so whatever you think. But I didn't want to raise that till we got into the fire and emergency services, but thank you.
So, okay, thank you. And Mr. Emmons doesn't want to talk to us now. Thank you for that, Mr. Wright. Yes?
Yes, well, Ms. Haight.
Yes, as C A O Wright explained, no, you will not have to go back and revisit this decision for this item. As you will see when we go into the fire and emergency services, again, the, the recommendation is the same as what this recommendation is, is that all current bylaws stay in agreement, stay status quo. And during the transition period, and when the new council comes into place, that's the time then that the bylaws will be revised or repealed and replaced with bylaws under the new municipality. And agreements will also be reviewed and changed to reflect the current or the new municipality. So as, as I said, as we go through the next items, this, this staff recommendation covers those items as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Hopefully that, we have a, a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion as required? I guess there is.
Yes, go ahead.
Counselor Northcott. Yeah, no, just a short little comment here. It seems fairly simple to me, the staff recommendation there. I don't see a lot of conflict, or not really aware of a whole pile of conflict between the existing bylaws within the Village of Caroline and the, and the current bylaws with Clearwater County. So they would just proceed as is, and then in the future, be revised as needed. So it seems like a fairly simple recommendation to me, that's all.
Thank you. Well, I'm going to call this to a vote. If there's no further discussion, all in favor of the recommendation, or the motion? Yep, Barb and Counselor Wald?
Yes.
Thank you. unanimous, carried. All right. Screaming right along. Let's move to the next agenda item, which is continuation of emergency services, which shouldn't be too difficult, hopefully. So is there any discussion on emergency services? Okay, can I get a motion to? Yes. Deputy Reeves.
Thank you. Is nobody presenting it, or are we just going to jump right to a motion? Okay, because I'm like, I have questions, but I figured you'd want to present it first.
I wanted to get past that.
I have question. Have you not figured out yet that I always have questions?
That's why I went the through.
What's that?
Can you read this question?
Very.
You guys learn a lot by my questions.
All right.
Oh, I'm intent, I'm not going to share what I learned.
Without any further ado, Ms. Haight, go ahead.
Thank you. Next item is continuation of emergency services. Again, referring to the previous item, all existing bylaws are in effect until during the transition period and the new municipality has opportunity to review and then, and then carry on as, as accordingly. So the staff recommendation here is that the committee agrees that current regional emergency management program and plans, including Clearwater County existing staff and Clearwater County and Village of Caroline existing bylaws, and council and advisory committee resolutions remain in place and carries over to the new municipality. So as everyone is well aware, there is already intermunicipal agreements with the Village of Caroline and Town of Rocky Mountain House and Summer Village of Burnstik Lake and Clearwater County for emergency management. There is a ministerial order that recognizes that and validates that program. Now, after amalgamation, there may be some adjustments that have to be made. The minister may decide to keep the ministerial order in place or may issue a new one, just reflecting that now the agreement is between the county, town, and Summer Village. So as explained in the report, and, and I'm just going to sort of summarize the next steps that need to be considered during the transition period, and administration's recommendations for that activity. So most importantly, everything is to remain as status quo for the service level, and these are the suggested actions should amalgamation occur. No consolidation of emergency management plans are required, as the emergency management plan, agency, and advisory committee are already regional. The two existing emergency management bylaws should be rescinded in the transition period after an amalgamation to consolidate into one bylaw. No amendment to existing staff is anticipated, as the regional director of emergency management role is currently regional, and powers for all three municipalities already exist within the regional partnership. Consultation, notification to the third partner, the Summer Village, would be appropriate prior to amalgamation or amendments to ministerial orders or bylaws. The minister may choose to amend the existing ministerial order to reflect the new amalgamated municipality reality. And finally, the regional emergency management agreement could be updated in the transition period to reflect the new amalgamated municipality reality. So again, fairly seamless, and I, you know, thanks to the regional collaboration, the important, the important items are already in place.
All right, well, thank you. Questions? Would you unplug this thing? Yes, Deputy Reeves.
Thank you, Your Worship. We truly have a fire service and emergency services to be envied. In fact, our agreements are utilized by other municipalities across this province and country in order to help them facilitate regional cooperation like we have. My question actually is involving the EMS service within, within the Village of Caroline and, and its composition. I know it's changed composition several times, and I'm curious if the Village of Caroline has any work with that particular service now? Because I know that the village at one point did through a volunteer EMS board, et cetera. I'd love to know what the status of, of that is, and if that's something we need to consider.
It's, well, it's basically private, public and private. How does that work? Independent, thank you. We did at one point, but now they're, they're independent, and I don't know how much more I can add to that. They provide a fantastic service, and we're thankful to have them there. I've had to use them a few times already. So I can't tell you much more than that. We don't have anybody sitting on their board officially, so. Do you have further supplemental?
Just guess.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. Is this an opportunity that we can use to advocate for the service level of EMS within the Village of Caroline? 96-hour shifts are, are not good for the staff, they're not good for the community. It's, is this an opportunity that we can look at advocating for the service level change within the Village of Caroline to better reflect the needs of that community and the greater Clearwater community?
I would suggest no, not at this time. That would be a discussion for the new municipality.
Yeah. I was hoping this could be a way in to fix that.
And I'll ask the C A Os to, to jump in.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Emmons.
Thank you, Mayor Emmer. I would concur. At this time, the task at hand is the conversation. A new council, a new municipality, absolutely, would be far more appropriate and great timing to bring it forward, even, even an R M A as, as a topic of noted interest. But at this time, I would, I would suggest that this process doesn't allow a segue into that at this time.
Try, I gotta try.
Okay, we'll go with Counselor Lawheed and then Counselor Northcott.
Thank you, Your Worship. Looking through this agenda item and looking at the, the names that are there, and I know in your background information, your verbal present, presentation of this, you did mention the town. It's not mentioned within this background information. I want to just make sure there is a delineation between us drawing the town into this discussion?
Sounds like Tracy won't.
I do, yes, I do stand corrected. I'm sorry, the town has their own emergency management. I was remembering back in the day when it was with, but no. Um, I was remembering back in the day when it was with, but no.
Thank you, I just wanted to make sure there, you know, for those listening.
Yes, my apologies.
That there wasn't, that there is a bit of.
My apologies, yes.
We're not drawing the town into.
No, no.
Into something that they're not.
No.
Part and parcel of being able to decide or rec, recommend in this case.
Yep, no, so strike, strike that.
Thank you.
All right, hold on. What do?
Oh, my light's red.
Yes, you're, you're next.
Okay.
And then Larry can address that.
Just for a little bit more information on the ninety-six hour shift, actually just a question for Deputy Reeve Melhath there. And maybe for people to really understand, but if you don't mind, what is like the details of a ninety-six hour shift? And what would be entailed like that for, uh, for EMS?
Please.
Uh, thank, thank you for the, thank you for the question, so, um, I, what, there's something called a core flex, um, model. We, we have it in Nordag, there's one in Caroline, unfortunately, there's also one in Rocky Mountain House. Um, and Eckville, those are many of the services that serve Clearwater County. Ninety-six hour shifts, they are on shift for ninety-six hours straight. Um, those shifts can timeout, so you get, uh, fatigue management. Um, but there's no timeframe of work that allows for that. So if you do a three-hour call, you have an hour down, a four-hour call, two hours down, like those are counted towards your eight hours of downtime. Whereas if you work fourteen hours straight, then you can get a bigger chunk of, of downtime. Um, it's really, it's, i- in my opinion, um, it's inefficient and it's actually unsafe for not only the workers, but the people in which they're serving in that community. Um, whereas like a twelve-hour assimilated truck where you're working twelve hours straight and then you're relieved and you have two new people for twelve hours. Um, it's, I actually think it'd be safer to be eight or ten, but twelve hours is the common model. Uh, and I feel you ever getting fresh people every twelve hours instead of ninety, having two people for ninety-six hours straight flexing their time throughout that entire timeframe. It's not safe for them or the community. I'd love to find an opportunity for us to advocate for that to no longer be the case, particularly in our larger, um, utilized, um, EMS services like, oh, Caroline, Rocky Mountain House. Did that answer your question, or do you have more? I'm passionate about the thought.
Yeah, absolutely, no, and really it's just for the.
Don't get her wrong.
For, for, for residents watching, right? Uh, I'm just curious statistically, like on a, you know, on a ninety-six hour shift, what the statistics would be with the individuals that work on there? Is it, is it, do they work on a ninety-six hour shift? Would they work ninety hours or would they be like out for twenty hours or what? Would the, I probably don't have those statistics available, but, um.
Can I just bring this back to where, back to? Yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Wright, I believe was next.
I think I was, uh, delayed a little bit here. Anyway, in any case, we have the, uh, service come in and regularly brief our council as delegations. And I know, uh, what was it, about a year and a bit ago there? The key concerns were, uh, this local service is being tied up in Red Deer and Foothills in Calgary, uh, for no good reasons, and I was extending their shifts and we went through that in detail. And we provided support in writing back to different resources within the province here on those kind of issues and that. And, uh, like I said, we do this and invite the service in on a regular basis as a delegation to brief council. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Counselor Graham, uh, is next.
I would just like to make a motion that the amalgamation committee agrees that the current regional emergency management program and plans, including Clearwater County existing staff and Clearwater County and the Village of Caroline existing bylaws and county and advisory committee resolutions remain in place and carries over to the new municipality.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor, but we had a flashing red light. It's not a can, is it, that you're?
No, it, it was just to enlighten you because, uh, I just wanted to make it clear that the ambulance out in Caroline is governed by volunteer board. And they are the ones that govern up there.
No, I, I was aware of that and what I stated was that we don't have anybody from council officially on that board.
Yeah, and I don't think we do either from this county. It's independent.
Yep.
And it works really well. I'm, I'm not sure about the ninety-six.
It works so well that Calgary NEM didn't wanna use it all the time.
Yep.
So we have a motion on the floor, or is that addressed, that?
That, I just wanted.
You just wanted to enlighten me.
Yep.
I'm aware.
Just, just so that everybody knew how it was handled out there.
And it's a great service. All right, we have a motion on the floor. I'm gonna call a vote, all in favor of the motion. I'm seeing hands up all over the place except for, I can't see Counselor Wald.
Yes, I'm in favor.
Carried. All right, um. Can I move on to, uh, regional? Okay, fire and emergency services. I'm assuming that's why our esteemed chief is here. Thirty-two. Yes, I'm, I'm just trying to find myself.
You can't say stuff like that expecting not to make a joke.
What? Well, he's got a lengthened up around here a bit. Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Ms. Ate.
So this next item, fire and emergency services facility future, again, it is, um, the staff recommendation is that the committee agrees that current fire and emergency services facility future remains status quo. Including Clearwater County and Village of Caroline's facilities all remain in place and ownership carries over to the new municipality. Again, and, uh, I won't, I won't, uh, go through the, um, background information in detail, but, uh, as everyone is aware of the current existing buildings for the fire rescue services, uh, Leslieville, Condor, Caroline, Nordag, Rocky Mountain House, and, uh, the, um, regional fire services headquarters. So, moving on to what would take place after amalgamation. Again, uh, the administrative recommendation is that, um, because that it's already, fire and emergency services is already regional, that everything should remain status quo as far as service level goes. And that these next, uh, these steps be taken after amalg- or should amalgamation occur. So no consolidation of emergency management plans or facilities locations required as the emergency management and fire services are already served re- regionally. Consultation notification to the third partners in the respective regional services agreements would be appropriate prior to amalgamation. The Caroline Fire Hall lease agreement between the county and the village would become moot with an amalgamation as all the fire emergency services facility would be owned by the, the new municipality. The intermunicipal fire rescue services agreement would need to be updated in the transition period due to its existing expiration date and could be revised related to facilities ownership at that time to reflect the new amalgamated municipality. With status quo and emergency service for fire and emergency service levels, there is no need to discuss adjustment to add or remove any fire or emergency services facilities. However, as noted previously, administration recommends conducting a conditional and functional study of the current Caroline Fire Station during the transition period.
All right, um. Actually, I don't even have to look. So why don't you go ahead and, and ask the, the question?
Do we know what number we're on?
No, thirty-two.
Thirty-two, 'cause it's a challenge now, you know that, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
I had to look it up on the phone to see what, what came after thirty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, there's, the, the verbiage that scares me a little bit is the intermunicipal fire rescue services agreement would need to be updated. Uh, I know the trepidation that last councils, um, went through in order to get through, um, the fire agreement. Do we foresee some cause for concern, or am I merely being sensitive?
Yes, go, would you like to tackle that one?
Thank you, Mayor, and I defer to Chief Laitis, uh, to chime in anytime. Um, in all, in, in all my. In all my meetings, um, with our third partner, they are extremely happy with the current agreement. They like the way it works, um, they feel it's more efficient and streamlined than the previous. Um, I wouldn't anticipate any sensitivity whatsoever.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Emmons, um, did I answer your question or are you gonna suffer?
I looked like the chief hit his button, but it didn't turn on.
Would you like to respond, Chief?
Sure, I'll add to that, I'll concur, uh, as well with, um, Mr. Emmons on that. I don't foresee any major changes, um, the relationships that I've been involved with for the year and a half that I've been with Clearwater County, representing the fire service here. Our relationships with the town, the village, um, Burnstick Lake as well. We've been very good with how we've built our growth plan, our response models and everything as a whole, and that's continuing to grow positively. And I don't foresee any issues other than just minor amendments if the amalgamation were to go through administratively.
Thank you. Come for Lawheed.
Yes, certainly with the background information and with what, uh, what staff has presented here in the last few minutes, I would be pleased to, uh, propose that the amalgamation committee recommends that the current fire and emergency services facility future, um, remain status quo. Including Clearwater County and Village of Caroline's facilities all remain in place and ownership carry over to the new municipality.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Nelson.
I just have one question that is a big question in my community, and it's for the fire chief. Uh, solar farms have fires, are we prepared for a fire?
Great, excuse me, great question, Counselor Nelson. Um, yes, when it comes to preparations for fires on the solar aspect that you referred to specifically, we have our response models built for how we respond to those. And they're very similar to industrial, obviously, being in our county, we have a large oil and gas presence. And depending on the nature of the emergency response plan built with that industry partner, we respond with them as well as when they enact their emergency response plan as a whole. Certain aspects will have an industrial partner that is their first call. But our first priority is always the public, the environment and the safety aspect of the people there. As for the nature of the incident itself, it may be handled, depending on the nature of the emergency, by our services and/or their third-party contractor where we would act as a support for anything around the surrounding issue.
A third-party contractor in place?
If their emergency response plan designed that way, for the ones that have reached out to us thus far that is in the village area, yes, that's part of their emergency response plan. And I can confirm that last year we've had several meetings with their entire team on addressing that as a whole. So it's not a surprise to our service if we get toned out to an emergency at a solar farm.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, uh, for the great question, Counselor Nelson. We have a motion on the floor. So we'll take the vote, all in favor of the motion?
I'm in favor.
Okay, we got, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, uh, we move down to the fire department and I'll hand it over to Ms. Ate. I'm, I'm starting to get that, you know, so let's go.
Thank you. Uh, this next item is, uh, regarding the fire department operations. And the staff recommendation is that the committee agrees that current intermunicipal fire services agreement and regional fire service levels, as well as the Wildland Urban Interface Program, remain status quo. Including Clearwater County existing staff and Clearwater County and Village of Caroline bylaws, resolutions, and agreements related to regional fire services and the WUI and mutual aid agreements and other municipalities or government entities all remain in place and carry over to the new municipality. So as, as identified in the background report here, um, there is a current intermunicipal fire services agreement, uh, which is a tri-party agreement between the town, village, and Clearwater County. Fire hall facilities, dispatch equipment, staffing are already in place, serving both communities under the regional agreement. And as Chief, uh, Laitis had stated, the relationship, the agreement is, is working very well. So what really, uh, remains is, um, what, uh, what steps need to be taken after, uh, should amalgamation occur? And there is, uh, a list here. And these would be undertaken during the transition period and as per direction from the new council. So existing fire service and fire control bylaws for the two municipalities should be rescinded in the transition period after an amalgamation to consolidate into one new fire service and fire control bylaw. No amendments to existing staff is anticipated as fire services is already a regional partnership provided by the managing partner, Clearwater County. The Wildland Urban Interface Program is a Clearwater County Fire Services Program that is provincially grant-funded operationally. And no amendment to existing staff is anticipated for that non-regional program. Consultation notification to the third partner, the town, would be appropriate. The intermunicipal fire rescue services agreement would need to be updated in the transition period due to its existing expiration date and could be revised at that time to reflect the, the new municipality. The quality management plan related to fire safety codes accreditation for Clearwater County and the village is already joint and could be revised during the transition period to reflect the new municipality. No consolidation of emergency management plans are required as the emergency plan, agency, and advisory committee are already regional. Existing mutual or automatic aid agreements between the county and other municipal or government entities can carry forward to the new municipality as boundary adjustments from it and amalgamation would not materially impact any of these agreements. With status quo fire service level, there is no need to adjust machinery, equipment, or vehicle fleet as the fire service is already regional. Administration and councils are aware of the desire for a new fire hall in and around the Village of Caroline. And that, of course, any discussion on that, uh, fire, new fire hall would take place after amalgamation and it would be, um, uh, up to the new council to discuss. So administration recommends conducting a conditio- conditional and functional assessment study of the current Caroline Fire Station during the trans- transition period to aid the new council in making any decision.
Thank you very much. Questions? The chief is right here. Um, all right, without, uh, can I get a motion then to accept this if there's no further discussion? Yes.
I would move as per staff.
All in favor?
Aye.
Barb? Oh, there's your hand. You can see it, all right, carried. It was easy for the chief, wasn't it? He didn't have to put out any fires here. No, no. I just thought I'd add that for the audience. Thank you very much for your time. Zipping right along to five-point-six bylaw and enforcement operational. We are on page sixty-six and yes. Ate, could you please? Hey, could you please inform, form the committee of what we're discussing here?
So last but not least, and hopefully this will help answer a question that was asked earlier uh today regarding bylaws and like enforcement, bylaws and enforcement. Um, this is an operational item, however, it, it is, it needs to be considered by, by the committee. So before the committee, there's two options uh for them, for the committee to consider. The first option is basically no change. That uh Clearwater County's existing staff related to bylaws and enforcement remain status quo. Clearwater County and the Village of Caroline's bylaws, resolution agreements and contracted services related to municipal bylaw enforcement all remain in place and carry over to the new municipality. And reductions in service level expectations should be evaluated and considered during the transition period. The second option, there is a change to consider, and the change would involve the addition of one staff, one CPO, Community Peace Officer Staff Member. Now, this would um come into, this is related to the transition period. It's suggested or it's recom- suggested to increase to a five peace officer complement during that transition period to offset additional enforcement requirements and maintain ex- existing service levels. And that current county and village um bylaws, et cetera, all remain in place and carry over to the new municipality. So for background information, um currently, the Clearwater County enforces highway management, noise, land use, and um animal control. Now, with the addition of Caroline as a hamlet in the transition period, and um considering that there is a provincial highway that runs right through the hamlet, it's anticipated that there may be more, yeah, an increased, increased workload uh for, for enforcement, particularly traffic safety. So that's why there is that option to consider um and an additional CPO officer. As far as the animal control bylaw, both the village and the county, they use the same contracted services. They use the um, there's, it states here that there are two municipal contractor agreements in place for the contracted services. So there's not some, there's not too. That should remain status quo. There's not too much impact to that particular enforcement service. So should the amalgamation committee recommend amalgamation? The default noted in the amalgamation workbook would be that all existing staff and bylaws will carry forward to the new municipality. And again, there is a recommendation, or administration has the following comments related to actions should amalgamation occur. All the enforcement-related bylaws noted above should be reviewed in the transition period and updated or rescinded to reflect the new municipal reality. Amendment to existing staff com- complement should be considered by the amalgamation committee to move the CPO program to five to maintain existing enforcement service levels or alternately consider a service level review or reduction. Service level determinations could be status quo for staffing complement and including public expectation management of enforcement, and that could form part of the overall amalgamation communications plan.
Thank you. Number thirty-five?
Don't got a lot of time to get up to triple digits here. I gotta get.
Oh, yeah?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, who's doing the CPO enforcement within the Village of Caroline now?
I'll defer that question to CAO Wright. I understand that there are no, the village does not have uh community peace officers, but uh CAO Wright.
Can you come back, Larry?
Yes, Larry.
Yeah, yeah, thank you. No, we do not have a dedicated CPO at this point in time. As in the notes uh and the outline uh provided by Tracy, though, we do have a just-in-contract agreement with animal control, and we do utilize the RCMP to support our services overall. Um, I guess there's a little bit of news. I'll throw it at uh both councils right now. This week, we were just uh in the process of analyzing the uh highway safety on east and west approaches. Our transportation has complied and brought forward a plan for us, uh five hundred meters to the west side, ma- four hundred meters to the east side, and so we'll have to consider that in our safety programs and our CPO approaches, okay? That's a bit of good news that nobody else uh knows at this point in time. Thank you.
All right.
Supplementary?
Supplementary.
Thank you. So considering the fact that there is no current CPO enforcement within the town, or within the village, sorry, it would beg to question that why would we need to increase our staff for enforcement that's not being done anyway? Sounds like our, our four could handle what's being done.
Mr. Emmons.
Administratively, uh, we would anticipate going forward in one municipality, there would be an enforcement expectation, um, an equitable level of service, so it would draw on the resources. That's, that's the philosophy behind that, Deputy Reeve.
I would like to address that before you have your sixteenth supplemental. Uh, presently, you know, we don't have, other than, than uh a CPO coming in and poaching in our, our village, as some people have called it. But uh, yes, we do have the RCMP that comes in. If we were to amalgamate, uh, my question would be, you know, you have, what, let's say, with the, with Rocky Mountain House, the RCMP, and you got the, the office of the CPOs here, you have no coverage on the south side, and we're waiting forever for cops to come down. I do not see why uh we would, would, you would need to have a complement of four CA- CPOs up here, and then you also have, I don't know how many RCMP stationed here. So it doesn't make logical sense or uh to me, uh, the way that it's set up at this particular point. If we did amalgamate, it would make more sense to have possibly your office down there, because you already have police uh RCMP out through here, and which can respond a lot quicker, whereas we're waiting forty-five minutes, sometimes or an hour, before somebody shows up. So that's all I had to add to that, and no, I've got Larry up next. Please. No, you can't.
Um, I think I almost left my hand up from before there. Apologize for that, folks, okay?
You don't have anything, then?
No, I had hit it before, but I didn't uh withdraw my hand, okay?
Well, then I have to let uh Deputy Reeve respond to me, so.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, we aren't in charge of the RCMP whatsoever. We aren't in, in, we do not control their deployment model. We do not, we get, they get to talk to us occasionally. We ask them for certain things, but it's not, we aren't in charge of their response model, and CPOs do not respond to calls for action for nine-one-one. Um, CPOs do uh road protection, road enforcement, um occasional bylaw, stuff like that, but they are not officers that respond for, like, nine-one-one response calls for action. I don't want to give the impression to the Village of Caroline that coming into an amalgamation uh gives them um more nine-one-one calls to action support, because that's not what our CPOs deliver. But I did have a question as well for our administration. Wh- wh- are our CPOs assigned to a hamlet? Like, because the Village of Caroline, I don't think needs a CPO on their own.
I do.
You do?
Yeah. I'll respond to that after. Mister, Mister Emmons.
Assigned, no. Um, our CPOs are assigned to Clearwater County. So they do patrol, uh, they work closely with Public Works. As very well stated, our CPOs are responsible and legislatively assign the responsibility to protect our infrastructure and public safety. So they mo- work closely with Public Works, uh, monitor the road use agreements, the rig moves, um, and of course, uh, being well experienced in this area, know the trouble areas, and patrol as, as needed. In that, uh, also comes site-specific uh issues, uh, if I could use that poor term. There'll be a large event, and they'll know of it, and they will patrol that as well. Uh, but assigned to a hamlet, not specifically, no.
Yeah, uh, they're assigned to different areas, because I know that uh um your CPO from southern part of, of the county there actually has to work up through here. And then you, one of your other CPOs works down through Caroline, so they, you're assigned different areas. I believe, from my observations, that's the case.
They are not. Uh, they do patrol, and they have their own routing, but they aren't assigned zones. The benefit we have with uh our CPOs living in rural, they are able to start work right from their doorstep. Uh, so when they get in their patrol vehicle within Clearwater County, um, we have a CPO that lives south. He can start enforcing right there. Um, we have another CPO that is further south. They can monitor the James River Bridge when they, when they come right into Clearwater County. Years ago, we had a CPO that lived in Nordic, um, which was ideal for tha- that hamlet. To and from home gave great coverage there. Um, but they are, they are not assigned zones specifically. They do shift.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I wasn't aware, it just, I observed the same uh CPOs that, eh, within the village, and the other incidents, that, that's fine. That explained a few things to me. Uh, yes, who is next? Let's go with.
Lights everywhere.
Good grief, okay. Counselor Lawheed.
No.
No, no.
Um, thank you, your worship. I, I guess, from my perspective, as we, as we discuss forming a new municipality and aligning umpteen hundreds of uh bylaws and resolutions that may relate to service levels, I think we can expect there could be additional calls for the community for those service levels to be uh carried out, and I think that does take people. I think in the transition, it would be prudent to suggest uh that option two might be more valuable in being able to meet the needs of the community rather than say that there's a deficiency and then try to, to step into it somehow. I believe, for me, option two is the most approachable at this stage anyways.
I'm gonna go with uh Counselor Graham, and then we'll come over to you, Reeve.
Well, it's perfect. I would echo Counselor Lawheed's comments. The way that I'm also looking at it is I know that our residents out in Nordic are concerned with not having lights and sirens out there as much as they would like them, and while obviously peace officers don't have the abilities that our CMP have, some people don't know that, so they could feel more comfortable having them out there and feel as though they're a little more secure. So I think that option two would be the best option as well, just, I think it would benefit the entire, the entire area to have, have that, that extra person out there, and I definitely think that the CPO presence is strong in, in the southern region as a truck driver. I feel like they're everywhere that I go personally, so maybe I'm the trouble. But um, I've never even had a ticket, though, rock and wood, but um.
But they're following you.
I do think that, it feels like it. I do think that um option two would be the best choice here.
All right, thank you. Reeve.
Thank you. Um, you bring some good points in regards to response levels of RCMP, and that's been a focus of our may in discussions at our conferences of, you know, an Alberta Police Force versus uh the RCMP. So I know within the organization, um, you know, we are advocating to the province to, you know, for, for more uh coverage and even to have those police advisory committees uh come about. So I can understand, you know, when you don't have somebody respond for an hour. I know that mine, the, the residents in my area have an option of waiting that hour or longer as well, so, or they don't show. And then I just, that, that's just part of it, so I understand the concern. Um, I do agree with uh option two as well. I uh understand, I know the, in the past, this council and previous council have been uh very diligent in ensuring that that service is efficient. And so we used to be a five complement. Now, we were down four for a while, so going back to five and understanding that the service level uh through the transition period will be, will be needed, so I would be supporting option two.
All right, so well, thank you. Is there any other discussion? Oh, for heaven's sakes, what? You're not used to this, are you?
Well, most people actually value what I have to say, so.
I do. I do value what you say.
I actually am the outlier on this.
Go ahead and.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, I actually am the outlier on, on this, and, and I do not want to see us increase service levels through this amalgamation process, and an increased CPO is an increased service level and an increased budgetary item for um the municipality of, of Clearwater County prior to the amalgamation. Should, um, we need to get this person in line prior to becoming the new municipality. The, i- if, if this was about people responding to nine-on-one calls and calls for safety, calls for action in that respect, absolutely, we would need that increased officer. That's not, this is about, this is, this is about infrastructure um management and protecting our infrastructure, and I think that we can do that just as well with four as, um, or even three, maybe.
Well, maybe we need less paramedics.
May- you're right, yeah. We need more good ones, not a good ones.
Thank you for, thank you for that. Um, Mr. Emmons.
And Deputy Reeve Malhoff is, is correct in the fact that the numbers of CPOs do reflect the level of service. Respectfully, I would correct the fact that um, as Reeve Swanson pointed out, we, for years, were at five, and a previous council reduced the level of service, and we're still operating at that reduced level. Taking on another community will further reduce. I would just look for this committee to define that level of service, uh, recognizing that current Clearwater County Council has continually asked for more enforcement continually, more presence in Nordic, um, more monitoring over the restricted bridges down south to preserve um and, and the parking issues, and it would be an understanding and a level of service that truly is in your purview to, to define, and it could go down to one, and it would reflect the level of service.
Thank you for that, and uh Counselor Lawheed, or, or was it uh Counselor Nelson? Counselor Nelson, please.
My point was the same as the CAOs. If you have four people spread over a larger area, your service levels in the Clearwater County are going to drop. I think we want to have the same service levels.
Counselor.
Thank, thank you, your worship. I think my question is kind of along the same line of really challenging. Is, is it an increase in service levels? We, we have to do increments within, we can't have, I guess, probably could have four and a half, but that would be difficult. It's challenging to, to work with staff that way. But ultimately, if we have five hamlets now, and we add one more, I think that proportion is staying consistent with adding an additional position, especially when we get the feedback that maybe we needed more than four a- at present, and will five be able to maintain that service level? I think the community has benefited from those doors being shown within the community. I think it keeps people uh a greater feeling of. I think it keeps people, uh, a greater feeling of safety within their community, having those doors. I, I think I can appreciate it within my own community of Condor, seeing those doors in that, in that hamlet once in a while. I think it keeps people's speeds more reasonable and, uh, people be more cautious of their, um, approach to the community, so I think that's something the community values. Um, and, you know, I mean, I, I, I understand, it, it seems like, uh, a service level increase. But I would really challenge, is it, is it, or is it something that maintains a community standard that is appreciated and valued?
Well, thank you for that, and it, it seems like it's, uh, only my point of view would be that it's like insurance. You have enough insurance to cover, you know, this is a huge county, and you got four four running around here trying to do things, and it is very important, like a lot of them have said, is that, uh, like out at Nordic or whatever, th- then Caroline, if you have someone there with, that has some flashing lights, at least they know who to contact. You know, you might not be able to get, eh, you might get nine-one-one, but, but you would have at least somebody with some legal background, be able to help out on, on some issues that might be there. They don't necessarily have to do any, any of the heavy lifting, but I think it would help immensely. But we have, uh, Counselor, uh, Northcott next.
Um, yeah, I would be in support of option two. Uh, a lot of the calls, actually, the calls that I get from residents aren't often criminally related where the RCMP are need. It's, uh, it's often in violations of the bylaws that are, whether it's noise, nuisance factors, or that sort of nature, which a CPO would address. Um, I think that, you know, any budgetary or additional salaries required, long-term would, would, would probably outweigh and pay for themselves, just due to the, uh, to the reduced damage to highways and overloads and damages to bridges and, and, uh, yeah, I'd be in favor of option number two.
Thank you. Uh, number, what is it? I've lost count, it's thirty-seven.
Thank, thank you, mayor. Um, we have enhanced officers already, so they're already doing enforcement within the Village of Caroline. Um, you said you have them in there poaching, so I don't know how this would actually change bringing on another officer. They're already doing enfor- um, enforcement within the Village of Caroline. And as, uh, as far as paying for themselves, they don't even pay for their own operational needs, let alone the, the other infrastructure. So they only pay for a third of their own operations. I, I don't see how they're also then paying for, and I mean, you couldn't quad- you couldn't quantify it, that if they didn't catch that severe overload, overload before it hit the bridge like that, those things are very difficult to quantify, but as far as like enforcement versus their operational costs, they aren't even covering themselves, so I just find it difficult to think that they would be covering more than that, and I would see this as a service level increase, um, and I would see this as a budgetary increase. And I am trying to make sure that that doesn't happen throughout this process.
Well, thank you for the, um, Counselor Laheed.
From, from my perspective, and I think part of the discussion point here is through, in a transitional period. When we're, we're moving into a new municipality, we're not exactly sure what will happen. Um, and part of this exercise, and I hate to say it this way, but this is presenting a number of pluses and minuses to the minister, and I think there will be a point of time for a discussion with that very minister. That we have some additional costs as we move through the transitional period, and we need to have provincial support. Not only in policy and, uh, staffing, but in, uh, a transitional sum that will help us move into the next, uh, into the next governance structure or the next municipality as we move forward. I, I think it's a good way to articulate, to say that, yes, we had a combined four people before and we see a need in a transition that we have, uh, additional calls for service that can only be met with some additional staffing, and that's maybe a good bargaining tool as we move forward.
Well, thank you for that, uh, Reeve Swanson.
Thank you, your worship. Um, just a couple of comments for me and, and, um, Councilor Laheed brings a, a very good point in the fact that we will be, I think it's prudent of us to do ask the province for some transitional support, absolutely in this. Um, eh, we do have a very active industry, so oil and gas is very much, and I believe that it is going to continue, if not get busier. Um, we have t- talked about, you know, the expression of renewals, uh, coming more and more to the, into the play. Um, when I look at their, their duties, the CPO duties, uh, written here, we are both municipalities are going through an LUB rewrite. So there will be, uh, bylaw officer, bylaw planning, um, more, I'll just say follow-ups, et cetera. So there will be that weight of that, and I, not, not to say this is a negative, but it's not like we're recruiting to this position a lot. It's not a high turnover position. So to recruit to this position might take some time. Um, and so to fill that position through a transition period, we might not be able to fill that position. So understanding that, uh, there's that risk as well. So for myself, um, you know, there's a, a lot of key factors playing in this, and we know that industry is our, our biggest player when it comes to tax, taxes and because they bring in the biggest revenue for, and they are important, and we gotta ensure that that infrastructure is good for them. And I, I understand the, the, the budgetary impacts, but I also believe that it's may not be a position that we're gonna fill right away, so if we don't have it in place, uh, when we want it, we might not get it either.
All right, well, thank you, Reeve Swanson. Uh, I guess I, I have a one, a, a question for, uh, county administration, is that, uh, previously, you had five CPOs. Why, why was, was it just strictly monetary reasons that, uh, it was dropped down to four? Or was there some functional reasons why, or we just, somebody quit and didn't bother to hire somebody new?
Um, it, it was a change in service directed by the council of the day. Um, and there was a CPO, as my memory goes, a CPO did leave. And so the vacancy was there and the position was frozen. And then it just subsequently dropped down to four. Um, I, I wouldn't mind, um, Deputy Malaf and I have had off-bar conversations and, on, on this. And if I may offer up, cause it is extremely hard to quantify. Um, I think my easiest example actually is Sunchild Road. Uh, that road was forty-two million dollars invested to rebuild and pave. The overlay was eleven million dollars. That asphalted road lasted exactly half its intended life. Um, so that's five and a half million gone before its estimated time. We had engineers study, and that was one hundred percent attributed to overloads, so it was industry traffic. And here's where you can't quantify, but I would suggest that if enforcement extended that one year, that would be seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars saved on that one piece of infrastructure. Um, you know, you, you can't, that, that's, that's a theory. Um, but I think there's some reasonableness i- in that theory. Can you, can you test it out? No, because we can't quantify the what-ifs. Um, but we also know we have, uh, a fourteen-million-dollar bridge down south that is, we are continually putting millions in trying to limp that through, and it's solely attributed to overloads. Um, so you're absolutely right. It, it's solely identifying a level of service. Um, and what does this council, um, going forward, want that level of service to be?
Okay, well, thank you very much, Mr. Evans. Uh, which one of you was first? We'll go with, uh, Counselor Northcott.
Thank you. Uh, just one more little comment. There's, seems to be a rise in crime and also stolen vehicles, and so uh, may not be the RCMP, but they could, uh, maybe indirectly assist, you know, by running license plates or enforcing the, you know, the, the Traffic Safety Act, uh, so there could be some, uh, value in assisting to help reduce crime and identifying stolen vehicles and, and deferring that, so. I think there could also be a benefit, so again, I'll say I do s- support option two.
Thank you. Uh, we're gonna go with, because you.
I didn't even touch my button. That one wasn't me. Alana just knows.
Do not turn on, but not. So. Yeah, it's probably like, uh-huh, uh. Counselor Shermack.
Yeah, I, I have mixed feelings on this. I see in one end that, yes, we probably do need another officer. On the other hand, I would like to see that the intern looks at this instead of us at this particular time. I, I can see that there's a savings to having an extra one. I wish that, uh, administration would have brought this sooner to us. If this was the case that we're losing roads because we don't have enough, um, but I just don't know whether I would be in favor of putting in a new, one more, adding one more to it. Just because we're going into amalgamation. I can see other reasons. Brings me to it, but I think I would be in voting for option one at this time. Because we're looking at the amalgamation, not what the county needs at the time. I think they should have been brought to us before. Sorry to be picking on, uh, administration, but that's my personal feeling. Thank you.
Alrighty then, let's, um, I'd just like to respond in that, uh, just quickly. Is that you can never have enough, you know, police. Can't have enough EMTs, you can't have enough doctors, you can't have, um, and I understand uh, the increase on the budget, but it's not because of amalgamation. I mean, it might be an excuse to be, bring that forth. I don't expect to see a change in service within, within Caroline. You know, I think what your administration is trying to tell you is that we could really get that fifth one back, and it might take a while to get it. So, I mean, I might be speaking out of turn, uh, you know, but it's, I wouldn't blame amalgamation. We're not, if you wanna use this as an excuse, fine, but it's, I don't think that that's pertinent to this particular, uh, issue. We'll go with, uh, Counselor Laheed, because I know this is broken and keeps on going.
Are we sure? Okay.
Yes, please.
Good, uh, thank you, thank you, worship. Um, great discussion. Um, I think I've said where I'm at. I'll just say, say it one more time before I make, uh, make a motion. I, I do believe that the existing service level here is, um, ready for an increment. Uh, and if we look at the cer- current service level in Caroline, it's at, at the lower end of the spectrum as far as that. So as I have to augment what happens in the community after the new municipality, am I gonna be able to say to my residents, your services offered by CPO system are going to be increased? Or are they gonna be lessened? I would have to say at four, they would be lessened somewhat because that service level will be stretched just a little bit more. I prefer to go into it saying that there was no loss of service uh, to Clearwater County or the original Clearwater County, and that there would be, um, additional um, considerations brought into the hamlet to bring it up to the same as every other hamlet within Clearwater County. That's a much easier, um, discussion to have with somebody that's concerned about rural crime. And I've went through six years here where, uh, the topic of the day was rural crime. The community was very concerned about rural crime and also concerned about the presence of the RCMP. And one of those things that the community voiced was the showing of those doors of a community police officer uh, was, was of value, so I will make the motion that, um, the amalgamation committee agrees that Clearwater County's staffing, let's just say, I agree that Clearwater County recommends option two, or other, the amalgamation committee, uh, recommends option two.
I would just like to one, add one more thing before, and thank you, uh, Counselor Laheed. One other thing to consider, uh, before we'll let you have number two-hundred-and-twenty-seven. Is that, um, a lot of times, you know, we haven't seen it in the last while. You know, our industry out in this area has been very suspect and, and slow. With an increase, and we're sus- suspecting there should be an increase in activity out through here. It's another good reason to have, you know, an extra, an extra one. Simply because you can keep a closer eye on, on your major infrastructure, uh, the roads and that. Uh, you know, with the extra traffic, then pound the heck out of those roads, and if there's, we're binging them when they're, they're using those roads, then we keep that sort of under control. I just, go on with, with your, um, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, thank you, mayor. Um, I, I recognize this could very well be a need. But I also do not like the idea that a consensus-based decision is making a budgetary decision. In order to continue with this process, we either have to not, all not do it, or all do it. And I do not like the ability or the fact that a budgetary decision is being ba- made based on consensus. This is a budgetary decision. Absolutely, it's not just about whether we need a CPO or not. How much is that CPO? That's not in this, in, in this thing, and we're making a decision on a budget item without any of the budget information.
Excuse me, you're, uh, we're not making a decision.
That's budget.
What did you state yesterday? That you stated yesterday that, um, this goes back to council. All right? What we're doing is recommending. You've made the point that it's, it's a budget item, correct?
This isn't, this doesn't say recommends to.
Well, okay, the staff recommendation. You can still overturn this at your council. You know, and have the, the proper discussion with your, your council to decide, you know, and, and continue this. That's all, is that a fair point?
Yeah, no, I, I.
Okay.
Sorry, uh, thank you, Lana, and thank you, mayor. It absolutely is a fair point. But, so you would rather me sit here and agree with absolutely everything that's coming along in this, just that I can kill it at my council instead of trying to actively have a negotiation?
No, I'm just stating that because you brought that up yesterday, that, well, we can, we can crush that at the, the council. And you can do the same thing here, like on this particular item. I think that, and then you can have a further discussion on it with your own council without us interfering. Which you'd probably prefer.
I'd have to be honest with you now and not.
Well, I, I, I know you've made yourself honest and, and, and brought your, your point of view is that you don't see that, and all I'm trying to do is show you a different.
Thank you, point of order, back to.
It's what we do, it's a lot of fun. All right, point of order taken, excuse me, and let's go with there is a motion on the floor.
There, there is, and I, if I could speak to s- some of the comments of the Deputy Reeve. We are not setting a budget here. This is not Clearwater County's budget or the Village of Caroline's budget. This is for, it's something that takes place after or in, during the transitional period, not before. If we think that the, the budget that we've been talked about from now till January first. that is not what will be in place in January first. It will be a transitional discussion with whoever the new, um, council of the new municipality will. We're not making a budget decision right now. We're allowing that, that, uh, council in the future uh, to consider this as an important part of, of their budget. Uh, that's, that's my perspective anyway.
So we have a motion on the floor. Oh, geez, sorry, sorry, Counsel, Counselor Shermack.
I, I can see where you're coming from, Counselor Lawheed. But I think then that decision should be made by the intern council, not by us making a recommendation. Does it matter if we make the recommendation that we just go a status quo? And they can come back and say, yep, you're right, we needed five in the intern? Or do you think we should start soliciting for a fifth one now? Or wait until the intern comes? Cause I don't wanna put anything before the amalgamation date. I think it should have to come afterwards. That's why I think option one should be there. That leaves the intern to do all of their own thinking and their own options as twelve people or how many will be in there making that decision. That's my point of view on it.
Alright, thank you. Response?
It does please. Or is permitted by the, by the committee. I just, just, I, I do hear what you're saying. Ultimately, the community is part of this process too. We're, we're, we're answering a number of questions and giving recommendations to the minister. I would find it much easy to articulate the future or what the future could be by saying that we anticipate. Uh, I, additional, uh, service, calls for service being generated by this transition, and within that transition, we think that maybe rather than stretching the four we have, we maybe would be considering at that period of time, adding something through the transitional period. I don't know how long the transitional period is. We, it's been suggested it's till the next general election, but I suggest it might even be longer than that. It, it, I mean, not every question is gonna be able to be voiced and find a solution and for us to do the next good thing in that period of time. It, it takes a lot of work. So, um, I, I don't think we're thinking that there's gonna be a, 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 a CPO show up on January the second. I think it comes with a discussion, but it's kind of really formulating what we see barriers coming in the future and how are we addressing those barriers? And I would anticipate, this is one of the things we see, there could be some changes on that, and how do we, um, mitigate those, those changes? And one way is to say, well, we will be considering, or the transitional council will be considering adding an additional a CPO as opposed to letting it go and see where, where the chips may fall. I, I just think it's easier to articulate that to the community and have alleviate a few fears, but we can go with status quo too. Anyway, there is a motion, so I'll just shut up now.
Well, thank you, uh, Counselor Lawheed. Uh, Counselor Nelson?
Counselor Shermack has a point, and if you read the last of option one, it already is in place, and it says reductions in service level expectations should be evaluated and considered during the transition period.
So let's kind of take a, a vote on the motion on the floor. All in favor of option two? Those. Well, we need consensus. Okay, so Deputy Reeve, fire away.
Thank you, Mayor. I would actually say that we don't need consensus as this is an operational item and it's not required for the report to the minister.
Is that the case? Uh, Tracy?
Um, I'm sorry, could, uh, could you run that by me again?
Uh, yes, thank you. Um, operational negotiation topics, bylaw and enforcement, which is this, correct? Um, these are not required for the report to the minister. So therefore, we don't need to face consensus because this actually isn't an item that we actually need to put in the report to the minister.
It is not a mandatory item, no. Uh, but it is recommended that this item, like, is part of the discussions and is included in the report. Uh, but no, it's not, it's not mandatory. And it's important for the public. It's important for both communities to know because their greatest fear is, uh, what's gonna change? What, uh, what level of service are we gonna get? Um, is it gonna be the same? Or is it gonna be less? And going through these items and including them in the report and like negotiating and discussing, that helps, that helps both councils and it also helps the public, both village residents and county residents to, um, to have a certain level of confidence and, um, expectation that of, of what will change. So to answer your question, no, it's not required. Um, if the committee so chooses, they could, uh, well, this motion is defeated, so that could be it. Um, it's, it's whatever the committee decides.
It was, uh.
It's recommended to include the, um, the committee's recommendations on, on this topic, but if, if the committee doesn't wish to include it in the report, that's fine too.
I was under the impression that it had to be consensus all, all through it, and the question was, does it have to be? Because it's not, um, you know.
If, 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 if it's going in the report, yes, it has to be.
Okay.
It has to be consensus.
Thank you.
Unanimous.
Okay, uh, Counselor Lawheed?
Um, thank you. Just maybe a question on process. Uh, we're answering a number of, uh, questions relating to filling in a report for the, the minister, I s- suggest. And at some point of time, whatever the report, the draft of the report will come back to individual council. Is, it expected that there will be a re-debate of the issues on each of those things and it, within that report, are we going to accept the report as presented, or are we gonna go back and forth with a number of amendments, or do, do we have to have absolute consensus of council on that, or is it going to be a moment to say it's a four-three, or it's a majority of council? It's a, I mean, where, what does the future lie in all the work we're doing right now? Because this is only, this is only creating a draft of a recommendation that's gonna go back for a report to the minister. There, I, I just see a lot of opportunities for people to think differently, and I know some municipalities have the ability to, through their meeting procedures, to change their vote at any time they want. Uh, I'm just, I'm just wanna make sure this process is, is transparent and it doesn't make us look like we're, we can't get it together for even the simplest of, of, uh, items. But anyway, maybe if you could just outline the process that comes after we get this.
So the process is, is that, uh, this committee formed by two councils of the whole work hard, they do the legwork, they do the heavy lifting as, as what you have done over these last few meetings. All, uh, items are discussed, agreement is reached, um, between the two, two councils. With all of that heavy work being done by the committee, and because the committee is made up of exactly the same members of, of councils, of each councils, excepting the empty, um, Village of Caroline council position, counselor position. Um, it's, it's sort of expected that if the committee has done their work and, and, uh, has done it well, that naturally the next step would be for each council to approve the, the report. It would be, I would say astonishing if, um, if one or the other councils, uh, did not approve the report. Because that is why you have that committee. That committee is there to negotiate so that you can reach consensus agreement. So, but it's, it's still possible. It's still possible. Each council has that, that, uh, privilege of, of being able to either approve the report or not approve the report. And if they decide not to approve the report, they have to give their reasons. They have to justify and provide rationale for not approving the report. Because it's expected that the committee has done its work in negotiating. Does that answer your question?
With your permission?
Yes, please.
Well, yes, in, in, in partial aspect. I, I would, I would say that sitting here this long, I'm not astonished by very much anymore. Um, things happen, and, um, I know that part of our process, and we didn't really allude to it, but as we have these discussions, there is a running progress report to the community. So they will be very aware of the discussions that have happened here today and may very well give feedback. Expect your phones to light up if it strikes a chord within the community and you think differently on that. And I know people's minds change, so when I suggested what was defeated, um, it was because I anticipated that reaction within the community. And is it possible to move forward? Yes, there's probably at some point of time it will cost somebody some dollars to provide a service. That's kind of what we do. We're a service providing organization, and we are very efficient at providing services, but it's always questioned. Anyway, that's where I was at. I know we have to have a consensus, and I know, I see the time on the wall, so I'll shut up now and let somebody else introduce a motion that we can debate, please.
No, I, I appreciate, um, all of that. Uh, let's go with, um, Counselor Northcott, and we'll come back to my favorite.
I, I thought the, the item was brought forward by administration very well. That's really simple, gives both councils at this time the opportunity to jointly discuss this item, so I think was, the timing is very appropriate. Um, and just with the calls that I've received from residents, it's more the nuisance factor of the bylaws. So could there be an increase, in my opinion, for this, to have that additional, uh, position? Yes.
Thank you very much, Counselor Northcott. Uh, Deputy Reeve?
Uh, thank you, worship. One of the biggest things I heard when I went out, when I was at all of the, um, public engagement meetings put on by strategic steps, with memory of serving, um, was the cost to Clearwater County and mitigating that. This is one of those ways. Is, this is one of those costs. And potentially like an unintended cost in the long run, because the transitional council may say, no, absolutely. We gotta get those Caroline people under control. We gotta do enforcement in that community.
Good luck.
Um, exactly, because that's not what this is about. If it was really about that, then the Village of Caroline would already put a CPO in place. If they, if Caroline truly needed a ton of enforcement, Caroline would have already done it. I don't see bringing on, um, the Village of Caroline as a huge, um, enforcement impact to our community. Um, if there was a big enforcement issue in the Village of Caroline, the Village of Caroline would have already won in place.
Well, there is, but in the last one that we hired, a couple of Clearwater County residents stuffed him in the trunk of his car. So, yes, Alana?
Thank you, Mayor. I believe Barbara had her hand up. I'm not sure, just so we're aware.
Does she? Oh, how come I can't see it? Anyway, uh, let's go with, uh, Counselor Gibson.
Is there a way that we can just say that, um, we were unable to have consensus on this one particular issue? And leave it at that? Because we're going back and forth and back and forth, and it, it looks like we're not gonna run into consensus on it. So can we not make a motion that says the community as a whole was unable to have consensus on this one particular issue?
Thanks. Thank you, um, Deputy Mayor, and yes, if it's not mandatory on the report, is that possible?
There, there is a, uh, another option for consideration.
Okay, can, would you like to, uh, would you like to?
Would you like me to review option, um, this would be option one? So, um, basically, uh, uh, everything would remain status quo as far as the, um, bylaw enforcement program. Excepting the philosophy over service level expectations. Uh, there is a possibility that with the addition of a hamlet that it would, um, cause the existing staff complement of the peace officers uh, to be spread a little bit thinner. However, there is a caveat in option one that does allow for, um, review of those service less level expectations during the transition period. Um, so basically, option one doesn't mean that there won't be a fifth CPO. All that it means is, is that there will be a review during the service levels and, um, it will be necessary to manage, uh, service level expectations during that transition period. And as it has been noted around this table, that yes, it's possible for, for the interim council to consider it. It's possible for the new, uh, council to consider it. And again, with the transition period, it was also noted that it's, the transition period isn't just going to be a couple of months. The transition period could very well take up to two years. So it's just, uh, a matter of trying to, to determine or try to figure out just, or prepare. I think it's also a matter of preparing the counselors for, um, on, on how to manage ratepayers' service level expectations during, you know, that transition period and afterwards. So basically, not all is lost if, um, if the committee doesn't agree to option two, that's okay. There is another option available, and it's just really, um, having, having and I guess some breathing room to, to see what happens during the transition period before actually determining whether or not a fifth member. whether or not a fifth member of the peace officer program needs to be added.
Thank you very much, Ms. Haid. Counselor Nelson?
I totally agree with what Ms. Haid said. It does provide for, during the transition period, but in the big picture, folks, we have no bylaw really happening in Caroline, so our service level will go up and yours will go down. So do we want to be prepared and bridge that properly and go with number two? Or do we want to wait and see what happens? I don't think budget or cost or anything has to do with it. We're bringing tax money with us. We're not coming to the table with nothing in hand. We, we expect to be sharing the costs.
Thank you, Counselor Nelson. Reeve Swanson?
Thank you. Uh, as we are, this whole process, we're talking about all our service levels, so it behooves me to not have this in the report. It has to be in the report, as far as I'm concerned. So as with all concessions and as identified by Ms. Haid, that things will be evaluated and considered during the transition period, however long it would be, I will make a motion for option one to, for the status, for the bylaws and enforcement operational to remain at status quo and blah, 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 with evaluated and considered during the transition, transition period.
Okay, well, thank you. Sorry. Uh, yes, sorry.
I turned my light up. I was going to do it.
Holy... Counselor LaHid?
I'll save theatrics for another page.
Counselor Schirmack?
I, I agree that I think it should be option one. I mean, I've already stated that. But along with that, I would like to see a list of extra expenses would be compiled as we're going through this, that would be forwarded to the minister and extra expenses I'm talking about undertaking on the village, that we may need help with. Infrastructure, um, public works, an extra CP though, maybe some more lighting, maybe some more highway signs, reduced stuff. Can we put a list together as we're going along to say, hey, these are the extras that we feel that we may need help with? Physically, financially, mentally, whatever.
Okay.
That we can have help from our minister.
Are you done?
Yeah. I would like to add, please.
Okay. Uh, the... Ms. Haid?
Okay. Yes, there is a list that will be compiled because there are funds available for restructuring. That is phase two of the amalgamation process, and there is up to, if I, if I remember correctly, it's, it's based on per capita, but it's, it's over a million dollars, the grant funding that is available. So the, the new municipality transition and pay for all of those extra expenses, infrastructure, like you said, signs. There is grant funding available in the next stage.
Extra one? Right at the top of the list.
Gee, you're demanding. Okay, let's go with, thanks for that, and thanks, Tracy, Counselor Northcott, and...
Just one short little comment. I think both motions are, are both staff recommendations, very similar to see one as a proactive recommendation and one's a reactive, so I would still support option one. One was proactive, one was reactive.
Thank you very much, Counselor Graham.
I, you put that very well, Counselor Northcott, I would agree. I, I think option two is the better option still, but I will support option one because it's, it can still get the same thing done reactively, as you said, so I still support this motion still.
Without any further ado, I'm going to then move that we accept option one.
That motion is already on the floor.
Oh, okay, yeah, that's right, sorry. Point of order, boy. All right, so let's...
I just have one, one question to staff. Which meeting procedures by law are we using at this moment?
Caroline's.
Uh, regarding...
The procedural, the meeting...
This committee has terms of reference. Is there, is there a specific question?
Sure.
Okay.
Changing of vote. Can I change a vote after it happens?
Uh, you could ask, you could make a motion that the committee considers the vote and that process will take place. And with two-thirds of majority, um...
How does that look on a consensus?
So, so it's not, we're not following the recently opted Clearwater County meeting procedures. We're, we're kind of in, within our terms of reference, which goes back to Robert's rules, correct?
Right, right.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's hold the vote then for option one. We have a hands up? Yes, oh, okay, there's your hand. I was looking for the yellow hand.
Oh, no, it's not yellow.
Yes. Yes, Marion, or Counselor Will, please go ahead.
No, I, I'm, I'll vote for option one.
Oh, okay, recalling the vote for option one. All in favor? Is that a hand up or is that just leaning on here? All against? All right. Let's recall the vote then. All in favor recalling the vote?
In interest of consensus?
Was this a special Clearwater sort of thing that's going on here?
Point coming to a council room near you, in your future.
So we got consensus, correct? Barb?
Did they, did they vote to recall?
Okay.
And now do we have to restate the motion and call that?
Yes, we do, do we not?
I'm looking for clarification. So we voted to recall that vote and now that motion is to restate and recall?
Um, would it be all right if we called a recess?
This, we're like one, two votes away from it.
There will be no impediment to the process.
Okay, so...
And making an internal point, if nothing else.
Okay. Um, so, so you're recalling the last vote?
Yes.
For option one? Okay, and by unanimous consent, that vote has been recalled? Okay, so now next step would be for the committee to consider another motion of whoever wants to make one?
Consider the original motion.
Yeah, wouldn't it be...
It's a consideration of the original motion.
Consideration of the original motion by Reese Swanson.
Okay, so, and that would be option two?
Nope, option one.
Option one still.
Option one, okay, okay.
All in favor?
Okay.
Hallelujah. I don't know what that was all about, but it's, they were sure exciting. So, all right, we don't have a closed session today, correct? All right, so I just need one more motion.
He's not going to do it, really?
No, I just have a comment on the, 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 the statement that was there, I don't know, but... That was, uh, Counselor LaHid, I don't understand why you, why, why you went through that process. But anyways, I will make a motion for adjournment.
All in favor? Jeez, we got consensus? Hallelujah, all right. Okay.